Hey, I follow the order of the county council meeting for April ninth, twenty twenty four. First of all, we have minutes. Everyone had a chance to register minutes. At that vote calling, I'm not gonna vote on last month's minutes because I was on Zoom. And it is horrible to understand what things he said, so I know it took some vote callers. Uh, but I will say there was only four members here for those, those four that I wanted to keep in. Vote on the minutes, so are there any corrections?
I don't see you don't.
Okay, very bad then is their motion to approve the minutes in the part eleven. Okay, that was the second. Um, always in favor.
Hi.
So four, four oh. Okay, at this point, looks like we got a full house in here, so I'm going to um. Open it up for about a second if anyone wanted to make any comments to the council.
Oh, sorry. There's a whole thing going around about some solar panels moving down around two hundred and south.
Two hundred, two hundred.
Right home, sorry. A little on two hundred and south. I just heard about that this week. Just kind of curious what's, what's happening with that.
Well, I can tell you, I just heard about it this morning when I came in the courthouse. I saw a letter resignation from Amber from the uh. Hated to see that, but she did a great job on that. The administrator of the records and um. He told me about there's been a lot of permits filed with the reporter's office. Or not the best, but leases. And but there, as far as I know, there has not been any. Body come in and applied for a permit for uh. Solar panels. That's all I can tell you right now, because that's all I know and probably I. Here, have you even heard this?
I'm, yeah, I found out about it yesterday.
Okay.
That was maybe where it ended last week.
Okay. Found that. So um. I can't answer anything about it because we haven't seen a permit, but that wouldn't, the permit doesn't come through us. Uh, that would be commissioners.
Area plan.
Area plan.
There's been no permit filed for.
Yeah, we, we just seen the, the maps and stuff, but it's basically through the party road, where's your number? Almost silly at station and I'll be honest, you know, we're. Forty seven years building houses, I probably not only couple of years ago. It's done here, I can't. No one agrees with it at all. See, the big problem with my houses, all fields around there, they drain right through me. And everybody says, well, there's nothing in it, but you would take the hail from the stick and wow, then we're calling stuff. We get a right through my lane, we got a lot to the grid, the whole grid.
Do we have ordinances that how these are supposed to be done if they're done? This, this is very vague, if you try to look for, I, I've heard since I found out about it over last weekend.
Can I help you with this, I think, please?
I'm sorry.
Can you tell us who you are?
My name's Clint Gilby, I live on Grand Creek Road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if what I've seen is going in, it's going to be to the west of my property. Okay, um, and I've done research, I, that's what I've done for my first place to start. I have friends in different places, because we all work before we had friends who were, one of our friends is from the TVA. And from what I'm gathering, there's how many, how many thousands of megawatts are they wanting to put in here? The Tennessee Valley Authority has one thousand megawatts of solar power generated for seven states. Okay, now, from what I gathered, there's gonna be two thousand right there. So where's all this going? Okay, and then the next question I have is that, okay, if our, when these. I've looked at the websites from Indiana, but it's still very vague. Okay, Fountain County has some that meet some of the requirements of the states, but the heights and the fencing. And the drainage, there's one more in there that's not, and I, I, I don't have all my information, this is kind of. Like we found out about it just the other day. Um, the, it's just very vague, who pays for it, who pays the taxes on the property, who pays the taxes on the. On the solar panels themselves, um, who, when they set one of the solar panels are done. From what I gathered, these companies will sell them several times over and over and over to a lot of times to a bankrupt company, so when they're done. We're left for our, and if thirty years, most of us are not gonna be here, our kids will be paying for this. Okay, and that's what I don't want to see. There's somebody that'll have to pay for the cleanup in thirty years, or it's whenever they pull out. And it could be sooner than thirty years. Okay, the way the contracts, there again, I don't have all my information, from what I gather, the contracts are very vague, they can pull out. As soon as the technology no longer is feasible, so if they come up with a new solar panel, those are obsolete. Then we have acres and acres of obsolete solar. So that's my biggest concern is the, the environmental impact of it, and who's, who's gonna clean it up? And who's paying the taxes, because if I go out, we're going on a property after tax. Who's gonna pay the taxes on the tour? And nobody really answered that question.
Well, to my understanding, then the company pays for the improvements, that the land, the areas of their land. And then any improvements beyond the land is responsible, responsibility of the.
What are you gonna do when the company is being sold or wholly selling?
The contract follows the company.
Okay, so what does that company would think?
Well, that's where you have the decommissioning.
Okay, so now, and then to put that in perspective, I built a house thirty years ago, a roll of Romex was sixty five to seventy dollars. I just built a new shop, a roll of Romex now is seven hundred. Okay, so now if you put whatever number you determine is gonna clean that mess up under them. In thirty years, what's it gonna be? Your kids are gonna be paying for it.
They booked that for a couple of years for those. That was like, or the ones in Austin.
It's hard to pay back in the two.
I believe that's in there, but yeah.
What he's saying, he signed, they signed a contract, who's gonna back that contract? Yeah, that's the point.
Yep.
That's your point, get right down to the dollar bill, who's gonna be left with the pollution and.
Because in, in all reality, solar doesn't work. We all know that, anybody that's said any different. The subsidies from the government, from all of this is what makes it feasible, and that's where the money's coming from. It's not coming from solar generation, it's coming from taxpayers, it's coming from us giving a company tax breaks. That's where it comes, that's where the money comes. It's not. Solar doesn't, okay, it takes, and I, and I've been searching anywhere from, and you're not gonna get a good number, because they keep it, it's baby, they keep. Okay, you're gonna, anywhere from those one internet website that said three acres to ten acres for a megawatt of power. Okay. That would be a megawatt of power during the day when it's prime, when it's there, okay? And that doesn't generate power at night, it doesn't generate power in the other, okay? But. So now realistically, you're gonna need close to thirty acres to generate the power itself, a megawatt of power. And it's just not feasible, that's why they go, that's why. Other companies, it's smaller companies that put it in. Amber, do you know who the company? Exxon?
Hexagon. Hexagon, G. Soon as I found out, I looked him up on the web, soon as I found out the name, I looked him up on the web, I wanted to familiarize myself.
I hadn't even been that far yet, I just, you know. Are they a regular governing?
I, I don't know, I haven't done any of that. But I will tell you in another meeting, and I told Amber this the other day, she and I had a conversation about why there's a cap or the movement. That the county would expect on how many acres can be used for renewable energy. I asked the same thing to, uh, Rick Hall, who is with Barnes and Borber. If he had ever heard of that, he's an attorney, if he had ever heard that here in the state of Indiana, any county ever setting a cap. At that time, he said, no, but I believe there is one county in San Indiana, am I correct, was it Green County, Lowland County? Not available, no, no, that's right.
We were trying to, I don't wanna tell somebody what they can do on the possible. But at the same time, I don't wanna, my taxes subsidize, because nobody subsidizes my buildings or whatever I do, that's kind of the point on that.
Right.
And that's what we're gonna be, we're going to be subsidizing something that's really not profitable, and I don't agree.
Well, I think we need to put something in order to protect the city, because you can do it to our own land, but where's women in it? I mean, you got.
Oh, it's all.
It's all, I mean, it's crazy.
You walk across.
You walk out your door, there isn't one place in the house that you can go to and not see it.
And it's not like a distance. Right, it's closer than the county market.
Yeah.
It's right across the road, I think we can, less than be in concerns, agree or disagree with them, but unfortunately, I mean, we have control. Over the abatements and taxes together, but we can't change anything, right, the council. Your concerns need to go to the commissioners, whatever the hell they say, but that's what is the question. Right, and we're not a financial, we're just being vague. But the area plan commission developed a plan, but.
You're gonna say that, right?
Well, all right, so we, we know that, and we appreciate your concerns, because we need to know those, but. If we want caps, if we want larger sub-acts, we want that kind of thing. It can't be that, it needs to be the commissioners approving the area plan.
And it will be at that meeting, and so that, I'm, I'm prepared to do that, so that's where.
And for the vector, I'm here for a sit, as I understand, I already taken mine.
I mean, I, I understand Amber's resigning and that kind of thing, but it's got.
This is too much, and so we're too great to say we don't have conflict of interest.
Right. There are too many people on area account plan commissions that, or commissioners, or accountants that are not, I mean. We got too many people on the local government involved in it, other counties are taking care of their citizens, ours are using it.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's in, in small counties. They're causing people to try, we're supposed to be a small county, yes, exactly. So you need, they need to start thinking.
Well, I will, I will make it a public announcement right now, when it comes time for G X's abatement, I will step out of this room, because I am under contract. But I've been informed that they are not going to utilize my property, but it's a conflict of interest for me. I cannot have a say in anything that happens with the abatement or the economic revitalization area, I will step out of this room. I will not even be a party to the conversation, I will not even be a public speaker. I think it's only fair that I do that.
Right.
And I want everyone to know that, I want to be as transparent as possible. That, and truthful, I'm not going to be there. You guys know, and governments.
It's, it's gotten, I think people aren't mad, they're very disappointed. Very disappointed, I mean, these people are, and, and I don't care anymore, it's the dream. That is all it is, and this solar thing, it's a scam. It is, but we have a chance to go out, to the. Um, commissioners, Cam won't be available for no, 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 so it goes, it goes, and Cam is the culprit of this, yes, and then he's the one that set up on the planning commission and does not let any of those. Advisers and things want to go forward.
Yeah, I, I know for a fact, there's uh. Four hundred west, one hundred south, expecting two hundred and fifty acres of that. And that's at a dead end lane. When my father-in-law lives, it's, it's repeated. One of the, please that.
That's one parcel.
That's one, probably three thousand, two, three thousand. There's gonna be three thousand right up here. I'm not that brave, four hundred southwest. Four hundred south, one hundred west. No, four hundred west, one hundred south.
I mean, are, are we looking at solar panels on every township of those counties? That's my question.
That's not even stop, I don't know, and you didn't even know about this one, so you're not gonna know.
No, we're not.
So, I mean, what is this, so that?
Some, nobody, somebody talking about whether in the acres that. Want to make this, that eventually would be too much. To go to the grid, so that's there, and it's sort of.
That was.
I don't see what to say.
You want to repeat that for a second?
Where, basically stop. Okay, okay, now you're ready to go. Where is the grid, where's gonna tie into the grid?
Transformation.
Okay, so now.
And that's what stops it, the transmission line's been on the road, so.
But you're, you're gonna tie into the high-power. Park, it's west, we don't want that. Okay, where do we go? Okay, I don't think you can get from. The solar panels, says there.
Well, they've built, they've built, they've built seven stations.
Okay, so there, and there are gonna be batteries, but substations. Okay, so now, now that's the same voltage as the pilots, was it one hundred and twenty-five K? What is it, what is the pilot voltage?
I just, I just, more of this in your house, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a lot who do this, they're just the pilots. Okay, and they're all making the truth along a lot of that, because their, their infrastructure to do this is really not there. And it's just. Very, very poorly done, I'm very disappointed with our commission commissioners, it's just, you know, I, I was shocked when I. And then.
I, I know that you're not responsible for regulating the meeting as far as the licenses go, but the comment of the lines keeping a cap on the area is not a very good idea. Because those lines would always be.
I'm just repeating.
I understand, I have a tour, maybe you're worried if those lines can always be upgraded. And there's nothing major they can do, they already have the contracts in place, they can run new lines through that, there's nothing to stop them, so.
That's what we were just talking about, you know, that things, let them run their new lines. Can't stop that, because you're gonna sell that off too, for a certain amount.
I believe the meeting, I listened to that with the commissioners, feeling that the law would stop more from coming, but that was the. Also, they aren't even looking at lines, I was sort of pause for a buck right now, but they can, you know, like, help them believe, but I don't know.
Also, I would like that, that we have individuals who can put in solar. And when they've been using their solar, you know, for their whole home, they can sell off there, because they got it. And they're selling that off, so not only is it happening to the channel, we've got individuals that, hey, I wanna, I wanna hook up my home, I wanna save money here. I wanna build this up, I wanna make extra money to retire, what might be, and it happens. We have, I don't know if we got control in the air like that or the line or not. But it's gonna happen, it's not only that, you got water heading at you. That is.
It's CO two.
And you got that, and I'd like to find out more about the CO two. If anybody's got an idea where that's at me, I'd like to go, I only heard one time, and that's not helping me. But I, I think that when we sit back a month ago, when we first let the first quarter come in. Can we put a cap just anyway? Any state orders that allow us to do that, I haven't seen anything, have anybody else seen anything? Tom, I don't have a cap.
Tom, the plant. The plant commission has to make a recommendation, that there's a cap on the rock.
And that commission, I'm not sure.
Right. Had, we haven't discussed that.
That's right, a lot of you have, a cap, and you're letting them come in, it's not about not letting them come in. But they're doing commercial industrial, or if there's a field somewhere that is not swimming around people, have respect, is all people are saying.
Well, and I can also attest to, there are farmers that would rather have wind energy than solar, because they can still farm, and. It, it is, I don't like the fact that they use concrete like they do, but it allows us to have a little bit of both.
Right.
And we can't do that here, and I've had several farmers that want it, but they can't get it because our county doesn't allow it.
And so, and you know, they talk about bringing jobs, but really they're taking jobs, because now you don't have the farmer on there. The people that sell the chemicals, the people that come, I mean, so you wanna get in.
Oh, I know, I'm gonna lose six hundred acres, so, yeah, rented ground, so I, I totally understand, yeah.
I, I just saw a thing just before. What makes you more curious, what makes you support council meetings at that point? So I think one council meeting. When you said twenty twenty-two, I made a statement that. You know, the county's gonna be covered from north to south and east to west, solar panels and citizens aren't gonna have any due to speak about it. I think I spoke very passionately about that meeting.
Right.
And it's coming, it's coming to fruition, it's, it's happening. Um, I have spoken at my initial meetings, made the suggestions to change the company, the, so many were, first of all. My position on the zoning ordinance right now is the clear zoning ordinance, that ordinance is not a legal ordinance. The two thousand eight zoning ordinance is a legal ordinance, that's what this ordinance was adopted when the planning commission showed. The plant commission from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-three, its membership was not legally compliant, and that's when it came out recommendations to the commissioners. The changes of zoning ordinance. The membership on that commission was not compliant with the law, as far as I'm concerned. That I don't have the money, just who has the money to sue the commissioners? And the commissioner's attorneys may be paid by the county taxpayers, they're like, so they just wanted to. So, uh. I'll, I'll do what I can to make any motions that the plant commission gives, any ordinance, uh. I, I'm fairly sure that the new county has, it's not, for a term, ban of wind energy.
Yeah.
No, it, it can be done.
I know, for instance, we were in a conference.
Yeah. Yes. It's, it can be done, and another thing that I've had a lot of people on it. That wanted to come today, I can't get here because I work, you need to bring back the six o'clock meetings, it's not fair to the citizens, it's not for your convenience, it's for the citizens' convenience.
A, a, as far as economic development, who, who is one of, one of the good county developers?
No.
Because you don't, you're not gonna know, because you're gonna be surrounded by.
Right.
And what bank is gonna loan you the money? Is that any amount of development? Might as well put a sign.
So we're talking about.
Might as well put a sign at the industry panel, do not build solar panels.
So we're talking about getting people in here, it's making them grow, but then you're putting a damper on it, you know?
I, I can tell you, just from experience or listening, I have already had a conversation with my own family, what are we gonna do, where are we moving? And it's not just me, everybody in my row, same thing.
That's why I felt beginning, but I, I shouldn't have gone there, we all know, there's things you can do.
Yeah, there's no safe place to move about.
No, no, you're, you're running people out. Now, if you're in it for all the big developers and, great, make, make this caramel, that's fine with me. But you're, you're gonna run out, most of the people that are here, pretty.
I think Brad Crane. Had a comment.
Well, the people that are leasing the land, that, they're probably taking the biggest risk, because if the election goes the way it should in November. Brand new deal may be out. And if it's not subsidized anymore, it's, you know. It's not, for the while, we're paying for all this, if we once invented on wind and solar, our electric bills would be double what they are at, and. You know, and they'll, they'll never be enough to have electric cars. You know, the mass, the brand new deal is just the biggest partisan that's ever been put on the American ballot.
I just want to get rich and the policy, yes.
Yes. Amy Heino, and I wanna start by saying, I thank you all for serving your community up there. You're doing a job, ninety-nine percent of this one, nothing to do with, and you get a lot of flack, so none of this comes from me as well. I just wanna say thank you, I appreciate it, even though we don't always agree, and then ultimately, well, we're not gonna vote that for our kid, the branch he is in down in county. How we did there, we're gonna love that occasionally. But on your question of the CO two. I think that we need to get that out of here, so hope it can come through here, whatever. Ten years ago, we went to Monzaum and buried my sister-in-law. We pulled up to the cemetery, and they met us on the road, and would not let us enter the cemetery to bury our sister-in-law. We had an uncle or a cousin on the roadside and leave, so they had buried her, because the cemetery was terrified of sinkholes. And that's what kind of ground they wanna put the CO two in.
Okay, so.
We can't bury our loved ones out, we safely pump CO two in the ground.
Okay, so I can speak truthfully about this, Montgomery County is doing it, and I know for fact. They're doing it because we're French. There is a seventy thirty rule in the state of Indiana, it's a law. If seventy percent of the people in your area are okay with you having it under your ground. Then it will be done, and it will be done either by signature of a contract, or it will be done by internet filming. So that is a state law. So how we stop it, I have no idea. Other than. The I E D C. Yeah, I E D C, yeah. So that's, that, and we know this because my husband had to do research for it. Um, so not only do we have it coming across the river. But we have it coming in Montgomery County, and we are sandwiched right in between. So it's going to be up here, in my opinion.
Thank you, we saw the leak broadly, I couldn't help you with it.
That I don't know, I've heard both sides, I've heard that it's pretty done, and not gonna happen, I've heard that it is gonna happen, so. I have no idea.
The Indiana Finance Authority is, is doing the study now, they've been making, developing, doing the study. After it became, you know, aware, you know, aware and, and a little transparency. Um, they had to turn it, governor turned it over to the I F A. With the I E D C, you know, with the green.
Yes, I did read that they took it, took it over and.
They did, you know, a chip plant. That's K nineteen, they'll be putting four billion dollars into it. Doesn't take that much water, the one chip plant.
Brad, is that a just, is that a chip plant manufacturing, or is that a chip plant distribution?
Manufacturer, yeah.
Manufacturer, that's what I thought too.
Wait, hold on. They pull out.
I saw that.
I have a lot of, yeah, they pull out, yeah. And the research, the other one, there are many here, others that have. So with the CO two and the leak. From the information I gathered together, and from discussions I've had with. Uh, council and commissioners who have worked on it, basically, they've been told. That if they want to do this, they just need to state right. And that's basically nuts, and if you look at the map of how that pipeline to the water is going. It falls right along twenty-five, and then gets across. And then, so that's right along the state line.
Yeah.
Same thing with that over there, is they try to stop and come in with investment, and he said. We can still do it on the state side.
And I did hear that the water for the chip plant is possibly done from the county.
Yep. The water?
The water.
Yep, oh, I think the water is coming from Westlock, yeah.
Now, that's already been spoken.
Yep.
Crazy, I know, because I asked the person, I said, how on God's creation.
Did anchor Westlock, yeah, told me crap.
Yeah.
So.
This was coming from a Purdue professor.
I don't think that's right.
I wouldn't think so, that's an awful.
That'd be crazy.
It would be nuts.
Yeah.
That's what I thought too.
Okay, I, I just wanted to draft, because I think most people here about the solar panels in the south end of. Uh, Dr. Kevin, and I just want you to know that it's. All the permits are gonna go to the planning commission. The planning commission is going to go look at it, and they're gonna make recommendations to the commissioners.
That's not all.
That's not the way it works.
Yeah, that is.
Okay, then, okay, Jim is our, you're now should have on the U G here. Ben's file goes to Roger. Roger is a sole insider in the permit.
Because he's the zoning administrator. He's the zoning administrator, right?
And it's a rule if it matches our ordinance, like he's not saying yes or no on a personal.
What I'm gonna be brought.
That he's not.
And where is he from?
Uh, Denver, he's a Denver caller.
He gets contracted.
He, he, he.
He doesn't live here. Because, okay, he's, so he's gonna make a decision on.
The only thing he has to prove is, is whether he's the standard, he does, he is acting about a plan.
Actually, the planning commission is not even, given any information on what's going on with these permits in the process.
So why do we?
Exactly.
One thing I will remind you to keep in mind, is if someone tells you for next tomorrow, anything you do after this, doesn't matter, it's a permit, goes off of. What's in place the day they pop. That is why it's imperative to go to meetings, and you not have them keep pushing it back if you want something done.
Well, give her what if you say you're learning the other. Well, you were, you say you're learning the other.
I think said that the area planning commission board is not kept up to date on anything to do with the permit, anything to do with the technical review, nothing. Nothing, it's your commissioners are negotiating, it's Roger is the engineer that's making sure that it meets the county's ordinance, it's the legal counsel for Fountain County, and it's the solar company, that's it. That's it.
And why?
Is that how the ordinance was written?
That, so the ordinance, so the ordinance needs change.
The ordinance needs to change.
And that's what, I heard for months that the planning commission was going to change the ordinance.
But you keep doing that and then.
But then, but then the commissioners have to approve. And they're, they're, and we've already had one that says.
It's a fight. It takes long. It's a fight.
So, you know, the public needs to go to the planning commission and say, we, we need the ordinance changed. And then the ordinance needs to be changed, and then it goes to the commissioners. And the commissioners need to have the public telling them what they want in that.
That's been happened. That's been happened.
Amber. I know it's been happening, but I haven't, but for months, I, I've gone to every planning commission meeting for five or six months, except I missed the March one, and I, I hear over and over, we're gonna change the solar ordinance, but.
Yeah, no, wait, it's a fight, we haven't got to the, they haven't got to the solar ordinance part. It's been said that nothing's gonna be changed on the soul. They don't even wanna discuss it. We've got some planning commission members that want to, and we've got some that don't. It's never really been put to a vote, it's, it's talked about, it's put on the, on the board, for the next meeting, and continuously gets dragged out. No decisions, no good thing on here, no more.
But Amber, when they, when the board receives the communication, it's already said and done, that's what you're saying, it's done. Here's, here's what, here's what the ordinance is, and I even found out some of the board members, cause I've attended them as well, and they're very well organized, and some of those board members was talking about this, and then they had to get in the lady Roger, to see was the environment really correct. But the ordinance does not change because it didn't need the specification, or it didn't need the specification of riding, walk, riding, fall, park. So therefore, the board had to go down that ordinance, not knowing all the information, is that what you're saying?
No, um, Ro- Roger has been, he's drafting the ordinance, he's branching the board, the board's supposed to be reviewing it. They've got questions for concerns, they're supposed to debate, make changes, whatever the board wants, Roger will make those changes.
Yeah.
They not the authority, and not the other board decides. Now, if you bring something and they don't speak up, and they say, oh, everything you done's perfect, it goes through. Okay, so there's gotta be discussion on, people gotta say what they think and how they feel, that's not happening. They're looking to Roger as the expert, he's preparing the ordinance for them, he's preparing a service, and they're passing. They passing it to the commissioners for recommendation, commissioners don't know. If, if, if the area planning commission decided they wanted to change it for recommendation to the commissioners, they could do that, it goes up to the commissioners, the commissioners can say, yes, we agree with it, or they can say, we don't agree with it, send it back, do what we want you to do. It's just that nobody's, it, it's all talk, and, and nobody's making the amendment, nobody's putting it to a vote. There's no decisions being made, it's just, it's just being recycled and recycled and recycled, and nobody's making a, a decision on it. It, it's just going for it. They're, they're following, they're going with the most, they're following the flow.
Don't make a journey.
Um, Tim Shoemaker is.
Uh, planning commission chairman. Yes, Karen.
The commissioner appointers to settle the board, you got one in point.
Yeah, right, we, we get one. They, now, commissioner, point five citizen members.
Yeah.
Commissioners are point five citizen members, three, one commissioner and one council member, right, so there's seven, no.
You got the, for me, it's, you got one, you got one, five citizen members, you have one, the council and commissioners.
But we don't have a surveyor.
We have a destiny.
Haven't, yeah, and we would make seven one.
Roger. Both commissioners. And, and, and the party.
Right, and there can only be, uh, the five citizens, three.
No more.
Three, no more than three can be of one party and.
The commissioners aren't in the last of seventeen, two thousand. So, do you have anything else, girl, dear?
I, I propose the whole deal. The top of the bars, and the bottom of the.
It is all over, doesn't leave, it's, it's everywhere, it should not look.
It's stick out.
It's all around.
It's not about too much.
Come in, sand, orange ground, it's tough. That's all we build on, that's why they planned the movie, they're planning on doing it, people.
County's gonna be flooded.
Give you the ground, see the white, they have it right in the graph, one on one thirty-six, one's up at that alley. It's a white canvas night, and that shows exactly where to be.
A friend of mine from the T P A said that two things they look for, wanted to be incompetent or a corrupt local council. And that was his word, I'm not, I'm not, that's exactly what he told me. And then another one is, is there an Amazon or a hog or something going in somewhere close to here?
No.
Is that, okay, cause I've seen it is, I've seen it named it.
It's Ranger Power, they bought the power that's gonna be generated from Ranger Power Solar.
Okay, that's.
Amazon did.
Okay, and the next, the next question is, is there an Amazon involved? And I was like, I had no idea, this was too, and this guy's in Tennessee, okay. Okay, so there's a lot more going on to it than this, you know, so that was the three things that they're doing. It's either incompetent or corrupt council, or a Amazon.
And where is the Amazon going?
I heard it was in Amazon. And I don't know, I, as, the internet says they're going all in.
I, well, I know that there's really one in London. So I heard that. You get to do a lot of stuff for Amazon, Amazon is building up, it's already working. It is not a solar plant, there was a rumor that Amazon was paying the solar. That's not the same thing.
Amazon will pay residential expenses for, how do I put it, industrial grid power, I don't, I don't have a better say, I'm not very able to, but they will pay a lot more if the power that they're getting is a certain percentage green.
Well.
If that makes sense, that's what this guy told me.
It all goes back to penalties are going to have to be a certain percentage green.
Yes.
And it does, and even the state of Indiana is going to have to be a certain percentage green. So, tit line will have to be a certain percentage, Duke Energy will have to be a certain percentage, so if you're on tit line or do, their energy, a certain percentage has to be green.
And then they can activate.
Well, I don't, last week, Duke approached the state last week to increase prices. And that's to be approved by the state, but I believe that, as you said, your cost of electricity from Duke will go up sixteen to nineteen percent and approve.
Yeah, I, I just.
They have to use that you think that could be which cost.
I could see, that was the first three things he asked, was it just awful crazy? No, we're not getting Amazon anywhere.
No.
Okay, and then the other two, which is ours.
Yeah, it's always building a hub for distribution, and so they, from what I've been told, they have purchased the power that's going to be generated from Ranger Power, now, I'm not looking to understand how that power works, and anybody that's involved can correct me if I'm wrong. Think of it as power is a vocal agreeing M and Ms. And all those M and Ms represent power that's coming from all different entities, you have no idea where your power's coming from. The same thing is gonna happen with the solar energy, the power that's generated from that will be a green M and M that gets dropped into that mold, and anybody can buy it, that's like the energy that we use here, it could come from California, it could come from.
That's, that's not true, okay, the grid doesn't.
I do know it's true.
Okay, the grid doesn't go.
I have something that looks to be.
Speaking, it goes through Arizona and New Mexico, and everything lined, and China connects it, but not really this way, this is explained to me by this guy. So the first thing I said, I heard there's so much power to tell for, next word I have is not that, that, that doesn't happen, it's not possible.
It goes on the grid, it goes to the highest bidder. Make bridge, do we add?
The, the grids between here and there are not connected like the green, is what he's saying.
So basically, what, what do you foresee us doing as a council? Our, our power is earlier to be a base.
Yes.
Yes.
You know, the commissioners, the, the meetings I've watched, you know, are, well, we don't care what you think, we think it's good, we're gonna do it, and we're done with public, now, and it is.
So I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna throw this out there, and I'm probably gonna make people angry, and I'm sorry if I do, get everybody on the tax bill this week. And if you look at your tax bill down on the second page, it has a, 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 a graph there that lets you know where your money goes, where your tax money goes. And it has schools, libraries, county, and so forth.
Here, let me.
And wait a minute, and with the county portion, if you look at it, you will notice that that dropped. It dropped down, so when people say to us, our taxes are going up because you're spending entirely too much money. We're not spending, no, but people may pass that.
Oh, really?
No, I'm not, you think anybody in this room is saying that, that's your, you know, you're right, yeah. But I just want people to be aware that we do not, we did not raise the rate, we don't have the authority to do that. And we try and live within our means, just like everyone else does, and we try and do the best that we can with what we have. But we're at a crossroads now, and we don't know what to do. And we're in this, and we have the option of raising taxes, and we really don't wanna do that because you're in Fountain School District, you know, your taxes went up for the schools. And if you live in that school district, yours is gonna go up next year. Because they did two big cattle projects open in the. So we've got the option of raising taxes on this year. And in this stand, we have the option of taking these economic challenges, to offset that. What we, what, what would you propose we do?
If you're gonna be doing this out there, you know where else, when we spend an extra, well, eight million on the jail, that no one will pay attention to, supposed to be this much, and we end up paying this much, over run, there's way out of ways for me, I'm sorry.
Well, we're getting there, we've done, and we do get grants when we can get them, but I was not on this council when that jail exploded.
You said you want.
And my, I, I know, and my taxes went up just like everyone else's did on that topic. And I questioned it too, and I found out that there was a way that money could have been saved, had we gone with a different builder. But that's neither here nor there. So now, now we've got to move forward.
I think almost eighth grade taxes, total, and then I'm getting solar panels shoved all around you.
I know, I, I, hey, I understand it, because I form too, and they're gonna be all around me, and they're not mine. If I was, if they were mine and I was making money, I would be a little bit different, but they're not mine.
But, but at some point, you have to be a good neighbor.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
It costs me money, you didn't, who didn't need?
Exactly, and I, I do too. But we're trying to figure out what we need to do and how, what's the best approach and the way to go about it. So I am gonna get a hold of Noble County, and I'm gonna find out, because that's gonna be certain money from day one. And I think that's a good start there on that end of it, now, the other stuff. Definitely. I, I think it needs to go back to the table, in my honest opinion.
I, I just wanna make a comment, when you made about the jail, and, you know, and, and it was even before me, they talked about building a new jail, but the vote, voters in the county, not voters, all citizens that are monstrous, they stopped from doing that when the jail would have cost a lot less than what it did. Well, so we had to work with legislation and finally got whether to build a jail, and of course, we did build it, probably larger than what we need for this size county, but it is large enough that we're able to house prisoners for the state and for other counties. And our county's bringing in three hundred thousand dollars a year from, from the state and from other counties for housing their prisoners, so if that is helping pay for that jail also, just.
We talk about monies, you know, where are we gonna get money, what we're gonna do with the money, but yet we throw into some stuff that is just, like, why? Why are we giving money to add it for this project, so what's really happening? Why in the future maybe we do the trail and the bridge, and no one's going to be using? Uh, cause I'm gonna tell you right now, even though I'm here as a citizen, I'll tell you right now, our communication system's getting ready to go obsolete in two years, I've got quotes in my office for towers and for radios. You could have paid for it if you wouldn't have been doing all that. So we talk about the money, but we're easy to throw it at that. And then we act like Maple Corner, you know? It's becoming a money pit, it's gonna be a money pit, that is, either needs to be given away, poured down, whatever. We gave away the land over there, I mean, I could keep going.
Well, I, and, and I agree about Maple Corner, and, you know, we had a plan, build down the old jail, a building to house the corner, nine one one.
Yes.
And E M A for two point one, and you were involved in getting that plan. Local company designed it, two point one million, and Brad Crane reminds me that he said he could build it for less than two million, and he would manage it like he did the city of it, so we, we were told by commissioners that that's too much money, two point one million.
And they didn't do the progress study, but you did it.
And we can do it for less than that, for five hundred thousand to buy the building, one million put into it, one point five million, and now I'm seeing plans for fourteen million dollars. Then, and so that's why I said we should sell it, not put fourteen million dollars into that.
Six, six, sixteen, six, fourteen, fourteen.
But, we're not there yet.
Well, no.
We're not there.
We're not rocking.
Still, that's one of our five, whoa, whoa.
We talk about where's it gonna get the money, and here I see this and, and whatever, so, but again.
We are not there yet.
Right, again, I'm here for the solar, for the family, so I think like he said, be a good neighbor, there's a difference.
Yeah, we, yeah, so property taxes paid for the jail.
No, no.
And that's a special lift.
Yeah, yeah, property taxes.
Cause the monster's dead away, I mean, we couldn't do property taxes.
People need to realize that, every taxes, you know, they don't go to the community.
Only for the operation.
And the general will be paid off ahead of the time that it was supposed to be, I think.
Well, it could be, but, you know, the rates are so low. Why, why we can use that extra money? And that's what I've been working with the legislature, it's too late this year, cause that fund is bringing in more money than what the bond payments are. And, uh, Karen Agel worked on getting some legislation uh, so that we can take that extra money and use it for things that we need. And it was so late in the legislation that the Senate said they didn't wanna hear it, they, they'd wait till next year, and we can do that proposal, cause we're not the only county, there's several counties with a special lift to build a jail, and it's turning in more money, and they wanna use that money, uh, to pay on our end, look, we know, we're, we're gonna have to buy two new ambulances this year, because we haven't been able to get one, and, um, so so, you know, that is our plan, is next year to be able to use some of that excess money, but I don't think you wanna pay those bonds off with its three percent interest rates, and, that right, three, three. Three point oh five.
Yeah, I think that, I think it relies on three per.
So, you know, that, that's the plan, it's.
There's one day, we'll be building the jail down, so some of the flooring, the concrete was two inches thick. Some of it was twelve or fourteen inches thick, some of it was two inches.
And the, the, the old sandstone.
Yeah.
Yeah, jail, and that's why it's saying.
It's hot, it's sound.
It's my name, single. It's been doing grading when they cleared the floor. I think, Kelly, can I say one thing about a deal of history, Charles? I have, I was here, and they had to go put a million dollars in, closed it down for a while, and then moved all, all the inmates out. Put a million dollars in, closed it down for a while, and then moved all the, all the inmates out. That cost us a lot. Many times, you know, when you look back at it, many of the money was there, moving out, biggest thing we had available. And state says either either rebuild it, break it up a couple, or upload it down. Took a million dollars to do that. So what I first thought was called, and let's take a look at things, we have prisoners here, we were all crowded. We had twenty five, they put thirty. Because it's about some of these, you know, insurance, health insurance for those inmates. All of that be taken into consideration throughout payment in jail. First, it says anybody where you are, don't build that for thirty. Don't build that for sixty. Don't build that for ninety, build it enough so that, you know, things are gonna happen in the future, well, you could take a look. Take a look at a drug problem, take a look what's going on around us. Yes, well, we gotta buy, I think that's all the last report in recent meeting, there were fifty, he's he's here. We had fifty nine, fifty nine men and maybe eleven to seventeen women. When we built the jail. Brenda Hardy did a lot of work. She did, she did, she was there a lot of work. And we all attend the the meetings, so in the meantime, when that jail was being built, they lost. One of the main management, remember, I think they lost the first one, she was very instrumental during that period of time. Now, what that change made as far as money, I don't know, but I, we had good. We had good thoughts that put a good jail.
And I'm totally good with that, it's just favoring the budget now.
I'm good with it. I thought I thought people were willing to them budget on it from what. Uh, we didn't have, we didn't have to, I mean, we set what our bottom four and then they covered. And I don't think it went over.
I wanna add one other thing. Another positive. You know, you gotta do something with your society. And that's just one thought. And we can't just tell the society how to act. We have people on our. On our jail, our sheriff, we have people working the jail, right, and in the roads and so and so forth. And we're helping each other out, we're be water county, fountain county, park county, we're helping each other out. And what we're doing now, I'm gonna go around robbing on you, because we just now made a resolution. To help increase the salary of our. Of our sheriff and his and all of his debt. We have right in front of this. But it takes those people to run this county. And to make a change.
But it doesn't take solar to make all this.
I'm not trying to go solar, I'm not trying to make a very much paper now, I am not. I'm just trying to help them not to see where the money was at that time and time exchange.
He's he's got it.
Oh, I'm trying to just let you know.
We got it.
That's why we did that. So as far as the solar, you know, when it comes to us, you know, when it comes to us, it's already passed commission. We are left with no abatements or abatements. If we vote no, there's no room in. Unless we have, if we have a gap, that might help us a little. You know, I.
I think you get misinformation.
In what?
I think you can do that, I think you get misinformation, just reach out to other counties, like I said. When they're they're working for the citizens, it's a whole different ballgame. So, anyway. I can talk time during the day, so.
Well, you know, just go take a buddy personally, you have to understand that there is no permitting of solar advances, can't. Because they're already allowed without having filed for permit.
Is that from the state?
No, that's in county, county, counties. So there's a huge issue to start with, they're going to have to file for permit, they just have to find somebody else submitting Roger. Essentially Roger, says yes or no.
And he's.
That that is the simplest view of of the laws.
It's just too easy for me to follow, and that's why I think that if you're working on a council. I'm gonna wanna read a little thing on her here. But basically, the government, both of the essential stacks now. And we do not have that happening without counties, there's both a check of our whatever's happening. And right now, our commissioners are just running away with whatever they want to do. And so therefore, we are trying to talk to you guys as far as trying to do what you can. They're trying to beat that check and balance, right, so you talked about you have some abatement options. Uh, you probably have some, maybe, I don't know, the permit, the application fees and things like that for the. For the solar, but, you know, in other counties, they are much higher than they are here. We have, we have paid this road in gold for solar companies, and they are wanting hard counting. And so putting up a few roadblocks might at least help help slow it down a little bit without somebody saying we're getting roadblocks about the nature. So like, it our community isn't just handing out a bit, and and some of these solar companies are gonna go somewhere else where they are. Cause they're not gonna be able to make it here. If our permit and our application fees actually cover the expenses that are required by the county. Within the application, like, I don't know how much we're paying Roger. But he's doing all this engineering and working, you know, fact data, they're paying them, how much are we paying them, learning? You know, I find Eric, you guys don't have an intern here, that's thank you. He is saying what he think, you know, and he's swaying opinions. Not just leaving, so thank you for not talking to me.
I'll tell you. We have no control over the permit fees, but Amber can verify that. Tom and I and Jeff have been in. To planning commission meetings, and we are urged and urged and urged them to raise the permit fees. Permit fees need to cover all the expenses, and we have asked and asked, but.
We do not feel that it's a responsibility to pay for those fees.
I feel like he was saying, we're kinda like it, I mean, I would say like an open door, come on in. We don't care about who's here, do what you want, and we use the loosely, do what you want with your lane. Totally understand that, but again. Try to be a good neighbor. And it's a small county, we all know each other.
Yeah. Is it true you said they do not need a permit for this?
It's just, it's just, if it's filed, it cannot be denied. It can be negotiated to make sure that they fit the parameters of our organs.
I've seen several past minutes of planning to get you where the guy with two three acres, I should come in. File a permit to change your daddy's egg into business. But a a thousand acre of solar. Or, no, they're they're allowed without having to come in. Cause we, myself and Roger, we built fairly nice places, we keep them up to, okay, now, I mean, this is just gonna destroy our property. And they can say, the commissioner can say, nobody wants a. And I'm not being affected as much as the rest of you, it's one of the.
As a county, um, our goal when it comes to solar is economic revitalization areas. We vote on that, and we vote on the abatement, and on development. That's our our goal. I just forgot what an economic revitalization area stands. The basic definition of an economic revitalization area is. An area that is within corporate limits of a city or town or challenge. That has become undesirable for or impossible of normal development and occupancy. How is prime farm land qualified for an economic revitalization area?
You're exactly right, and that was an argument when we did the last one, and some of us voted. That has to be in.
Right, I mean, it's not a good idea to think about, because all of us need.
And just verify it's a two-step process, one, it has to take one vote to declare it. Then you vote the next month or a second time to vote on it again before you can do abatements. So that that's how the process works, and there has been a proposal brought to us today. To vote on. That resolution, but it will not be voted on today for one, because. We didn't receive until April third, and you have to have at least ten day notice to put public. Uh, for the auditor to send that out to all the taxing units and. Don't, you don't receive it six days, so we want the public to be able to see the ordinance and and know anything, so. That will not be voted on today.
So are you voting no rather than not to declare this land as the economic revitalization area, is that a first step?
That's the first step, but we're not doing it. Was enough notice for people to know about that, and that's for the the Gen X and the advocate area. No one else is applying.
So that seems like. I have one more thing to say to you, so the commissioner, I don't know how many of you guys are by the advocate. The advocate's been fighting fighting with the commissioner for a while, not all been. All this has been happening for the same one that surfaced a little bit. So the commissioners have said that they're basically planning to hire, so transparency can be achieved in this town. Right, most people feel like they have been kept in the dark, all this stuff has been happening, and things aren't being prepared or spread or whatever. So their solution to this, they want to hire a public relations person. And they think that's gonna help with the lack of transparency that was hit from twenty twenty nine. So real quickly, for reference, I wanted to read the public definitions of public relations. From the Oxford Dictionary, professional maintenance of a favorable public image by a company or other organization or famous person. And then from the Public Relations Society of America. Ad excor, public relations is about influencing, engaging, and building a relationship with key stakeholders across numerous platforms. In order to shape and bring the public profession of an organization. On Wikipedia. Public relations is the practice of manning and disseminating information from an individual or an organization. Through the public in order to influence their perception. The aim of public relations is to inform the public, the private government, investors, et cetera. And persuade them to maintain a positive, favorable view about organizations, leadership, products, or political decisions.
Okay, so using the word public relations maybe is a faux pas. On the county, because that's not our intention.
Okay.
The intention is to relay information to the public. So that they understand why it's happening in our county, because we don't have a county, we don't have really have a good.
Yeah, and I think the county does want the transparency, it's the only thing, but what we don't want is the one hires, it's been. That's and making people look better, that, you know, they can they get good on their own.
Right. No, I think the intention is to just relay information. You know, like meetings, or like the early voting days, or something with the health department, or something that a road's gonna be closed. So calling it a public relations person, I guess, is a mistake on the county's part. On that, so coming up with a different term that's more relatable to the information that we want to get out there to the public. Is something we need to look into, if that's the way, the avenue which we're gonna go.
Counting information also.
There you go.
Or, you know, maybe it's attorney for P P N.
Yeah.
Or an investigative journalist, I mean, one of the things that has come out equally is the. Current orgies was written with direct input from Rangers Valley. Right?
Right.
That, I don't even know why that was more out of the topic, but we.
So we're trying to understand that too, because we just found out about that ourselves, just a few weeks ago. So, um, we're trying to figure out the validity for one, make sure that you're correct in what they're telling us, and you probably are. You're like being researched up to that until you know.
Yeah, if you look at the minutes, from April twenty second, and from twenty one, from the from the planning commission. And and that's all we have to go on, right?
It is, it is from where?
April twenty second.
About that.
Twenty twenty four.
Okay.
There's a line there saying that basically the attorneys are moving right by side.
It says, it says Ranger Power Attorneys belong to county attorneys drafted to see for, so the the rules that. That our county is playing by was written by the player. So the government allowed the private enterprise to write the rules in. And in doing so, they also removed the public hearing, so that also removes the voice of the public. To stand in opposition to this happening. So. From a transparency issue, that's the highest level.
Well, thank you for bringing that to the commission, so we can do that way of that. Um, yes, do we have representatives here right now that are involved, you seem? From New York, Boston?
Yes.
Yes, but they kind of not go stand up and. And why are they, you know?
They are very well, they're talking solar, now we've been eating these two years at this point, not more than residents. Are we a family eating, staying, won't you involve the government?
Hi, everyone, Jenny Bartley, I'm the Director of Public Relations for Alton Solar. Um, I got one here in passing, she is a new to the company, so she's just here kind of. Did the same and sit and burn, so.
I'm Ken Campbell, uh, reliable, not from the law. Brandon Richardson, I'm a the council for Alton Solar.
So there, here for D Tom, the economic result, they wanted you to vote on that today?
Yeah, uh, they've been informed that we're not gonna quit on that today. Uh, there wasn't enough notice given for us or for the public or for any of the taxing events. Uh, but they chose to come, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna wanna tell us a little bit about what what's going on with their. Their program, that they've announced to.
Why is that necessary?
Why is?
Was it necessary for them to be in a taxation?
You can essentially condemn the land. Yeah, I mean.
The toward patterns, where the hint in that area? Then you give a tax payment.
Yeah.
Well, where is this, I want, give my money to these people, so my tax property volumes go down. Is that what you're saying, excuse me? Is that what they, is that what I just heard? Well, okay, they want our money. So my my property charter volumes go down, is that, they want money from us from taxes to destroy our community. I, that's not what I just got from them for compensation, am I wrong? Am I wrong? You're something else, you're worse than the people we're fighting. It's good started, I'll come down.
Jim, you got a question back there?
Well, I just, I just wanna make a point. But we're concerned about the community. And I'm saying that, since when I take this position in local record golf. For tennis. I just moved to tennis. And part of the reason why I did is because I wanted things to be open. Look, they look at it, I I go. And. I can't speak for the developer down here. But I can speak for us of that, because I think, right? We have other meetings. We we had other meetings over, we have, like, we asked it, some people not seen, yes.
There were like ten people, like, no, that's, I've never leave.
No, there was certainly. And then we added a high school and. You know, aside that, we have been involved in the community. I've always been involved in community, I serve on AM, serve part time, which is community. And activities have went on in Connecticut, and even the county parish have done. And activities that went on up in Attica and even the county comparison down there, we have done that. Now, I can't speak for the other ones. I, I can't. As a citizen, it disappoints me, because I wanted us, Gen X, to set that bar up here that when any developer comes in this county, they just don't come in, but they get involved in the community. And, you know, and I just want to say that. And you guys, it's my concern in, in our perspective. And I have some of the same concern. You know, um, but I just want to point that out to people. Because the officer down in the beach, he didn't know a lot about often going up to Attica. Um, you know, and there's still, for some reason, all these years, Attica's up here and Red County down here, I'm not sure, I'm not announced, but. Um, but yeah, I, I agree with a lot of things, you're just saying. That's it. But I want you folks to know that also I did just that, that we, we, we've done the right thing. We, we had the tough TVs. Some people didn't hear, some people didn't show up, had them. And, you know, had at the high school, um, and so the other developers, I have seen that. I think so, you know, and I have a most confidence that a citizen of councilman, then you can take all the money and we'll be your president. And a personal note, with nine one dispatch, you have nine votes, go down and listen to dispatch. The size of the plot, and these are the people, EMS, dear my heart, the dispatchers, these are the people that we call at home. They're in from that home, and the facilities we got in him is embarrassing. And embarrassing.
We probably could have been in on by now then.
Sorry.
We probably could have been in on by now then.
I don't know, but i- it's embarrassing.
I, I've got a couple of things. I just got a question. You can, most people aren't going to be infected until open their back door. Or at the back door. The sticker shock, when you find out that you're surrounded. Go out, you live west, you live east, you live north, you live south. You're surrounded. There's no place you can go to get it. Now, I know New Core, when they did their green fish, you know, thing, they had it with solar handle. When they're surrounding people, they're going to them people and they're saying, we can give you fair market values like a house, because we understand you're going to be surrounded. Now, they have that decision to take it or leave it. If they don't take it, it's on them. They're okay with looking at it. Why would this not done to the people within those conglomerates for the fuller, that are completely surrounded? No respect to that person that's completely surrounded. None.
For the projects down here, for the projects down here, I can't speak for them. But I can tell you that the people who's going to be surrounded or near, where it's going to be, Wayne and James, sat down with these people and talked to them and see what can be done. Now, with some of it, did they say off the fire or not? I don't know. But I do know that I know for a fact, three of the homeowners that lived up in Long.
They offered that.
They had, after they.
They sent their home to Wayne.
They were satisfied with what I was going to do.
They were not satisfied. I think we needed them coming here and telling them they were satisfied. Not everybody has the buildings to pick up on them.
And I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer the question.
Let's say that.
To save the conversation, we can go when we know our end of life. But I, but certainly, yes, we are in continued conversation. We cannot have a permit as issued by the county. Uh, the county for softball, we need to ensure a permit. You know, it's very possible, and I say it will be three of us, so we will enter each separately, we will request it. If it is programs to like to do that with us, that we need to do with regular, but later contracts have been enforced by our company or future companies, and it's not a responsibility of the county. Uh, current lead asshole to, you know, if they want to go find, and, and now they enforce the private contractual bridge in between neighbors. I think that's for their protection. That's why we want to have that extra level of protection. So I would say in late August, we mailed out, I don't know, what, five hundred postcards in the middle of that shit. Advising them, inviting them to a public informational meeting. I was supposed to have the, I, I will give a conference turn after that. There was a public, there was actually a notice meeting that happened in November uh at the, at the high school. There was another meeting in February this year at the high school. Um, certainly, I would refer to anybody to look at standards that we put in our project as related to the ordinance. We have standards that are in time, uh, what the ordinance requires. We have landscape, including video, which is kind of how to lodge, pollinators, and lots of other standards that we're putting into our project. If, yes, they are not in the ordinance, doesn't mean we can't agree to it and then be a good neighbor. If we do live in, whether it's private situation, but the most entertaining idea of monetary compensation, yes, well, that is. But at the same time, we're not in a position right now to speak about what kind of conversations are happening with, with neighbors. Um, we have a record of contracts, I say, probably, you know, feel free to take a look at those, if some actions are lower than one, it's their ability to schedule. Um, Dolphins over at the new, they two and a half, three years.
So you go off, you have a beautiful property, did they, they didn't want to be selling five hundred thousand, which you're saying that people bought five hundred thousand.
If you need to ask the owner when that.
Yeah, right.
Because.
Yes, yeah, in case, please. This is a beautiful, it's been a hundred years, this property, we are going to sell it, break the property of five hundred acres of solar and all of this property.
Well, as a, as a company, we look at that information and provide screening and fast data, another, uh, ways of.
Generally, just sell the property, please. Nobody go buy the property, ever, and for the location, no. It's been like that for a hundred years, and now that, this guy goes, don't grass down. For all good things. This right, guy who's here, a few hundred fifty acres, they've got private drive. It's a county highway, the county responsible for it is on many of them. There are no beaches or rentals, there's no way in or no way.
But just to be clear, we're not related to the private, we're, we're, and again, our private is one of the counties since October fourth. There was a, a tax meeting with the Land Commission. Uh, these staff, as we understand, the rights are in November. Uh, we've seen emails that have gone around that have been included in all of the members, so I, I'm confident that the Land Commission will be aware of what, you know, the status of Dolphins, or again, that the Land Commission members will copy all the emails that I have seen. And so we're being, continuing through this after the new conference, we submitted information to the county in late March and the response. It's a visual, but it's a process, the E D A conversation is a separate process. And that's a process that we counted, that we might have decided to issue that would produce a move forward.
We, we, we have, we have you on agenda later on.
Okay.
So David, can we go ahead with the community?
Did I say what?
When, when I, when I met with the company, or because of our performance to bring it down, so I asked them to go beyond what, what, what maybe they would normally do. I asked them to have public meetings. I asked them to be landlords, and, and essentially, they, they had a public meeting that they had at the high school. And I understand that you've got a plan to work and try to address their concerns. So I asked them to go above what the zoning ordinance required of. So I, I do appreciate you bringing this.
Well, you, oh, about a prayer. After it's done, how long is your government's duty coming?
It will start with, I'm, I'm.
It might, 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 it might destroy business and then nobody understands.
Okay, reported collection of this. Pardon me? We didn't know. Well, we have several, one hundred and forty, which is, is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's.
Just one last question.
I'm lying, and if I want to talk.
Yeah.
Maybe you should double comment. Okay, reported collections is submitted. Have there been a chance to look at the, the ambulance, February, March, clerk, health, February, March, recorder, and sheriff for March, their motion to acknowledge those. Second. The lead is all over the mayoral.
Hi, Sam.
I review and acknowledge graduate bankruptcies and monthly comparison report. Uh, their motion to acknowledge treasury bankruptcies in March of twenty twenty four along with a monthly bank reverse report. Jim Key, I'll say, they are all in favor.
Aye.
Uh, review and acknowledge the clerk's monthly report for February twenty twenty four. If anyone had a chance to look at that and acknowledge the clerk's monthly report for February twenty twenty four, their motion.
I will.
Day on.
I'll second.
David's second, all in favor.
Aye.
Now, I have an additional appropriation. Um, I will open the hearing at the ten nineteen AM. Is there any public comment on any of the additional uh resolutions that we're going to have? Yes, girl.
Um, we, uh, what house safety officers do we have? Two? Why do we have two? The ones, whatever judge has one in there, we can remember some, a lot at the time, and put that up before I speak. And our family picture, huh? Um, I believe.
So one deputy is, but one is a J R that they brought from the, the jail over here, so they would not be able to.
If you want to get the extra ten thousand dollars, that's the.
That bill.
Bill.
Yes.
And these three at the top here, are they on the pension fund?
The matron, deputy matron is not. But the state law requires the matron to be paid the same amount as the lowest paid deputy. Uh, we have no control over that state that's that. The jail commander is a sheriff's deputy.
Okay, so I mean, are all these raises because of the state asking to, or because you guys were so hard? Because we were leaving them.
We were losing them to Montgomery County and other counties, because they pay a lot more than what we pay. They get them to boot out here.
Exactly. So if none of this extra money has anything to do with the amount of money we're going to have to increase the pension fund with? No, we did look at that, take that into consideration, not worth being.
And that will pay for that from next year. The pension, because we're always a year behind on what we have to put into the pension.
And what did you come up with when we took a look at that?
Well, I do not have those figures, but I know Andrew Gates was with us. Anybody bring that paper? Ten thousand four twenty nine is how much the pension fund will have to increase in paying into the pension.
And how old we review that pension fund? Is there anything we can do to, to change that?
Now, state sets out in this.
So I'm taking a look at just the last five years before they retire. That's what the whole social security needs to be. Now it's an average of their other time. So that is that fund the state then? Or we have to look at the last five years?
There needs to be more on.
Yeah, it's better, why don't I? Something a little bit of service and race on us, because it's, because I don't believe it's your last five, I believe it's your highest.
Your highest.
Over. The, yeah, I'm just like, we, which is, I mean, for a sheriff, it'd be the last five years then, before you retire.
Well, the sheriff salary is set by the state.
But no five year, it should be for the whole forty years, the. That is not how.
Yeah.
Pardon me, that's not how the pension plan is raised. That's not why. College records, not an average, but always a difference. And I know, but it's something we can change, or that's instead of the state. Well, we need to go and go in the same in all of that.
Hey, let me.
It's your highest pay here, so you sort of, well, I don't know. That's where social security used to be, but they changed that. I don't know why we still have that with the sheriff's pension fund, be the last, you know.
Social security is not on your last five years?
No, the whole average.
Thirty, I don't know. It's like your highest thirty years or.
Highest thirty years.
I've got noticed mine's going up, so it's looking at my last years of salary, so. Uh, you know, we know, I thought we might do it by the back here. We. Yeah. Well, I have to look into that on this pension fund. Do you have any other questions?
That is from the first thing.
We got, we got any for an answer? I do have a question. Did our liability insurance go up a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, we do have, we were short last year. We increased the budget, they stopped on the budget of that, when we had. It may not because of our salaries getting up. And then I just got a renewal, I just got a renewal, and we are thirty three thousand over for next year, so if you want, if I have it, then I'll.
We're getting there.
We're getting there. We're just on the additional authority.
Well, that's, that's part of the addition.
Yes.
For the other regional region or? Well, that, oh, we can't do anything until we're down to that. Sure, but down there, we did, we raised the, hey, for same way as our, same way as our sheriff. We were losing all of our E M Ts and ambulance people, and they were making six dollars an hour for overtime, which is absolutely, we thought was outright, and we changed it so they get time and a half on their own time, which increasing our budget, but, you know, we've got to, we've got to keep our citizens safe. We've got to have E M Ts, we've got to have that.
How about called a month and add a bit of rest?
Hopefully, the comp time will be, since people are going to be paying overtime, plus we added regular account lines for us.
Well, we can say.
There's a draft in the comp line for account policy to give one and a half days per hour.
So that needs to be changed then, right? So it's funny.
If you do that.
But comp line, when they make the sales an hour, and now they're making barely a dollar a minute.
Right. So.
That needs to be changed.
The comp calls instead of eighty hours, you have to run it off.
Yeah.
And in one period, I would have six employees off. Where am I going to get six employees to fill the spot for the, on ambulance? That's my question to you.
Have they combined counties? Is there such a thing as combined?
No, we don't want to do that, so. But talk to remaining county in the county.
So, sure, they combined.
They're not combined with anybody. They're in trouble right now with the IRS. The private company is in control of the IRS right now, at the speed.
Okay, so they, they're a private company.
Would surround that with the county right now. County residents ain't over, and they're not sure what they're going to be able to do, because they're getting ready to decide.
It's just a lot, I mean, are there really already five companies, which are new kind of services?
They do, that's where they're going to get charged by three million dollars from the work force, you want. Because all the.
Which is bizarre.
But, count them. They don't, they may not get.
But, you know, private companies, the private service that's been paid or in government, just get out of.
But the counties that are not, you know, get that service, we go, what they'll do is, is they'll tell you at the end of the week. And that's what the remaining county, I mean, for a while. It's not, it's not, you're. Here also is about the. Here also is about the former on the ambulance, years ago, I don't know who developed it. But with this comp. And it's been in place for years, and you go to. The majority of the towns, they don't pay us. They, they don't pay that company, but that's been in place for years. And then that said, that. So, you know, when that, when that said, if you look at everything that's going on in our county. These council members and commissioners. I'll put a bluntly, weren't friends, they got fed shit sandwich, and now they're gonna make a deal of penis out there. Because a lot of the things that's counted, they just went on and on, and were due to the deployment as a community that has a county. And you do not want a private ambulance service in the county, you do not, because. They'll say, we'll guarantee one ambulance. So, and you don't want that, and the county that's done it, turn around and die, and. You know, same thing with the sheriff's farm, you know, uh yeah, it's a lot of money, but we need them, they won't be there. Here, I have a bunch of care.
No, not, you know.
Admiral, isn't that correct?
Yes, the number actually, the third one is on the remount.
And that's not expense anywhere here today.
I think one of them is.
Remount is two sixty five in the ambulance, we had budgeted for one ambulance out of the last, uh the budget for this year.
That's part of that, we have two on here.
The remount and the ambulance is on here.
We're taking one out, the remount out of the county farm. Yeah.
Prior, we don't need the extra money for it.
What we've done in the past is we've, we've tried to get a new ambulance every other year, but now. We ordered these for what, three years ago, we're just now getting the one from two years ago. And then for this year, so that's why we have two in one year, because. They say it all at once, but then you didn't take it one year ago, they had to buzz together and then the money went back in.
Why is that any reason?
All I said, we didn't, we budgeted for this year what it was last year, so we didn't have enough, and it went up last year. We didn't have enough money to cover that, and then it went up like thirty three thousand for this year, so. And every thousand, whatever, gets caught up with that. Yeah, it's like your, even your, your own, your house insurance, everything's gone up.
And our insurance rep didn't say that he went to that force and got it decreased. Because it was a lot longer, or a lot higher, and they said across the board, everything has gone up as far as insurance, so. We, we have put it out in past years, but they checked with others within and. Actually, EMC has been very good with us and took care of us, and they did decrease it so much, they didn't have to do.
So what was the name of insurance?
EMC. I have to look it up.
Now, this, uh, this grinder is now nowhere near.
Over ninety thousand. I thought Brock just said he can.
Well, that's, it was one point seven, now it's one point one, so.
Then we were originally all five hundred thousand. They approved it last.
Last March, we mean.
We could not find anybody else any lower, that was the best.
Nobody else we've been.
But that's not a lot of stuff to lay. Yes, and that will definitely, well, that will be an additional, as well, it will be additional, but that'll be. Taken out of the let fund for the jail, because the grinder is for the, the way we fill that. Yeah, I mean, but we have, there's five million dollars approximately as a special let fund. And our bond payment for one point, one, one point two million a year. So I mean, we cannot collect another dime for four years and don't make our money.
And when you start, it only goes five percent.
Wait, ten years, and then about ten years?
After ten years.
Three years, you know?
Four, five years.
Well, you put a lot of money in that building, done a bill. Spent a lot of money in that building.
For repairs? I don't, I don't think so for repairs.
Different thing like that, just like B M D building. Or that, have you got the bill on those windows yet, because they know you up there, it's gonna be five. Two thousand dollars a window, and there was five windows that keep beautiful. They're inside windows, yeah, and there's, there are special type of window because they don't have, whatever is above the door or fire suppression or whatever. It has to be built into the glass. No, and that, that's that way it was built, yeah.
Okay, any more kind of comment on the additional appropriations? Right now, I'll close the hearing at the ten thirty six. So we have resolution twenty twenty four dash four, county general sale fourteen thousand one hundred and five dollars fifty two cents. County general circuit four ten thousand seven hundred and eighty eight dollars thirty four cents. Let public service, public agency seventy thousand four hundred fifty dollars and four cents. Their motion to approve that. Yeah, 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 all in favor? Resolution twenty twenty four dash five, uh twenty twenty four community corrections probation grant. Uh total of six thousand two hundred and thirty two dollars, their motion to approve that.
Yes.
Um, second. Tim, all in favor?
Thanks.
So now, resolution twenty twenty four dash six, county general ambulance. Commissioners, radio dispatch. Total of seven hundred and eighty three thousand four eighty eight, county farm two hundred and sixty five thousand. New capital development, council commissioners, two thousand nine hundred and fifty. The motion said, we really didn't call it, one day, seventy two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. The, um, second, yeah, all in favor? They have transfers, they E nine one one, um, transfer seven thousand dollars from utilities to repair and make.
Equiture is what we use for reporting. Our contract had come up, and there is an extra three thousand dollars on that for installation, we'll hang free. Um, the new contract is a ten year set, so they'll be coming in and upgrading our, our software, or our equiture, who uses a recording forever. For when they go to hang up on the phones, being the radio traffic. Most of the necessity, I'll go by option out of the written translation, just the six thousand five hundred dollars that they give us up in front. So again, it's gonna save money, so it'll be up this year, another. So it was four, four thousand eight hundred and some dollars a year for equiture, now it's gonna be like five thousand. With the new, yes, with the new software, with the equiture, equiture is the next one, however. Equiture is what we use for recording.
So we're saving how much?
We're saving over six thousand five hundred dollars.
So the seven thousand includes the F three plus fee for a year?
And I'm also in that, I just needed a little extra to. They got into something that was wrong. I haven't talked with the Warren County, they've been talking back with me, um, I talked to all the local institutions, and they are all in with the ball, with the Caliber versus running off the equiture. With the Caliber, so I'm in talks right now, with, with them on talking your family is different, with the different. So as soon as I can get a set, I can go for sure.
When's the contract expire with Warren County?
With Warren County?
Because I know, it used to be they paid a third, we paid two thirds, and all the expenses of equipment, it was fifty fifty. And then the commissioners changed and signed the contract. Or certain fee in the last year, and I don't. So it expired in the night, so. Are we negotiating with?
Um, I have sent it over through email with the commissioners on what we need to do, and what we need to start in the procedures, I've done this before, so. And you know that the deadline is coming up, we're not aware of that.
I, I know you want, you're, you're in the best, but we need to look at. What we paid out last year, make sure that. Make sure we're giving our fair share of the money. Because I know costs have gone up, salaries have gone up, and then we need to make sure that we're. Okay, so we're on transfers, we generate. Kelly in second. Denise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh county general prosecuting attorney transferred from town to county to both the hundred and sixty eight dollars fifty two cents. Yes. Their motion. Dale in second.
All second.
Kelly, all in favor? Okay, resolution twenty twenty four dash seven, approving the sheriff's compensation agreement.
Okay, explain that to the committee.
Okay, so commissioners of all counties, the state sets the sheriff's salary. That sheriff can get money from all the tax warrants they serve, they get money off of the reels. Uh county stands, reaching agreement, sub salary for the sheriff, and that money comes back to the county. That has to give him, do you have to give him a check every month? They, they, um, for the commissioners, work on an agreement, pay him a salary, and then that money comes to us. Figure out how much on the back going, so the reels are given, so.
Who didn't carry also say, and very, agreed to.
So is there a motion to approve the sheriff's compensation agreement?
Do you know how much more this is gonna affect something, dollar wise?
Yeah. Eighty nine, so thirteen thousand.
But. As he's getting tax warrants anyhow, this is just a.
Easier accounting.
Yes.
It's, I think it's the same amount of money, but.
Look, it's affect the pension, the pension looks a hundred thousand. So it's not.
That's how we got the money, when I remember, because we were keeping that, so eight years ago, we have.
You made the motion to approve it? Um, it's motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those. Okay, uh motion to pay to approve the salary contract beginning March eighth. For a motion to approve that salary contract to sheriff.
And we don't say his salary, the, we don't let the officials know it's set by.
No, it's not. Oh, that's fine.
Uh, Jeff makes the motion to approve it, Jim says, ten seconds, all those in favor?
It's the last statistic, people are gonna pass.
Uh, that, that's the floor, that will have a march.
Yeah.
Okay, sheriff's retirement. So this, I think, that was discussed last month, but, and I didn't understand the discussion on the same.
We basically just waited till we were doing that, um, I didn't know where it came from.
So this is the.
Actual valuation, I think it's for them doing the new valuation for. So it's actual, it's not, I was like, no, it's, I think this is just. It's mine.
Oh, you, you, you say that, like, we paid out. But we better hear that, I thought you heard that.
We, we paid.
Yeah.
Except what comes out of the sheriff's pension trust. Because we, we need to send five hundred dollars out of there, we don't have enough funds because it's not building, because we spend it, so. So that money is not available, and we, we had a lot of five hundred dollars. Or plus, you know, it's money that is.
They, yeah, they're not in next page, over the next page?
Yeah.
Here we go.
So we just need to know how to pay for it.
Yes.
So on the option, really, is our council, how the council that has been. Or we have to wait and do an additional side. Their motion to pay that out for council that has been. Thanks, Tom, and motion to pay out council that has been. Kelly in second, all those in favor? Okay, amend the salary ordinance twenty twenty three dash ten. Did everyone get a copy of that?
Yes, I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those the highlights in red, what salaries will we change the? There are motions to amend salary ordinance. Uh, presented with changes made. Okay, so Jeff makes a motion to approve this salary ordinance, there's a second. There's a second, the salary one, Kelly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Ritter Strategic Services LLC under seeking permission to. Take advantage from Ritter Strategic Services out of the. They are selling in Mount of Houston, that's the five.
And who did Ritter?
Ritter is nine one one next.
Yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
I make a motion to do that.
Okay, I mean, both of them are second, second. Dale, all over the favor.
Aye.
Okay, that's gone here, we have area plan commission.
I'm going to wait to do the, my meeting with the board of my last, uh, I don't see that in a record. I wanted to go ahead and just. Try to leave, um, the floor, um. Um. I don't know, I have a few I need to put in the area plan commission, but I, I was very big on my board. Being involved in our budget, um, requesting a budget for next year. Uh. We budgeted twenty thousand dollars for consultant fees to help cover for Roger, uh, doing his work. Um, as you can see. With the bills that just recently come in, which covers his second quarter, um, bill. Uh, it puts us in a deficit of well over four thousand dollars. I'm gonna request, I, I wanted to get permission from my board first, but we were gonna request to move five thousand dollars. From the attorneys over to consultant fees to pay those bills. Um, I think we did a really good job planning and budgeting for that, the problem is we can't get these. Over on the right hand corner or right hand side. Under solar fee, paid by the area plan commission, these are fees that. We didn't plan for, um. It was something that wasn't even in our foresight, I know the previous solar agreement was that the legal fees and engineering fees were paid after it was done. Um, we did get that money back at some point. Same scenario with the dolphin, but it's coming out of my budget. Uh, nine thousand seven hundred dollars for dolphin, um. Bills I'm paying to Roger and for legal. Okay, so that's money that's gonna come back. But it's not gonna come back into my budget, it's gonna come back to the county general once I've said it done. Um. If, if that was not the scenario, I think we would come very close to be able to beat our budget coming to the end of the year. Um, my request. Uh, as admin of records to my area plan board, obviously I might not be able to do that. Is when this agreement is done, have Roger and legal counsel bill the companies directly versus. To the area plan commission to cover those fees. Uh, because it does, it does really affect our budget. Um, so just so you know. Um, sometime very soon, there's gonna have to be a, a request for an additional to finish covering. Roger's contractual obligation for, for the county. Um. I, I'm guessing it's gonna be somewhere probably close to ten thousand while we're taking out for the solar. So just wanna make sure you're aware of that. I'll get whatever I need to, to calling to move that money, transfer that money. And get those invoices in so those bills get paid. Uh, but beyond that, I'm not sure who's gonna take that over. Um, just wanna make sure you guys were, were aware of why I'm running out of funds, it's not anything that we're. Not, you know, it's money we gotta spend, it's bills, obligations that area plan has to do.
Right.
Any questions?
We might put. Hand key ballot publisher on here, Tom brought me.
Oh. I love Excel spelling.
Alright, so.
Yeah.
That's.
This was actually my little, um, spreadsheet, just a track for calling, she requested that I track the. Stuff for the solar, so we knew how much we'd need to reimburse, get reimbursed back. That was pretty small, I don't know, twenty-three dollars. It's a few years, yeah. But any questions on?
So we just need to make sure it's from ten thousand, it's wedge good. An extra, then, okay, I wrote that down.
Yeah, and we need to transfer the five thousand and transfer another eight thousand and.
Oh, you want, can we go ahead, you don't have?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, is there a motion then to, uh, transfer the money from an attorney fee over consultant fee to pay it over here? I'll do that, okay, then we made that motion. Kelly, the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I understand how well that should post my personal appreciation. But everything she's done for the plan commission, uh, we don't understand, we're kind of. Uh, pushback and yes, we don't, regular times, we can choose in the office and I just went towards my very own opinion.
It's just been a great job.
Yeah, it's been a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Pretty sure everything is done.
Can I make a quick comment or question? That's gonna happen now, the solar company names is safer. It's been, we've been having to be injured, you have this slower. And please, they're just having that in an application, it's something I got, it would be there.
Well, I. The, there's been discussion of area plans on the fees. I know there's a lot of counties, I've seen twenty-five, thirty thousand. Let's see if the fees are, are made to, uh, pay for engineering fees, they're made to pay for, uh, legal fees and plus. Uh, administrative fees for taking care of it. I believe the area plan commissions talk about writing in the ordinance, the solar companies pay for. Uh, the engineering and legal fees. So there'd be no room, you know, reason to charge thirty thousand because.
Those are the, they're paying, they're paying for those upfront. I think that, they didn't have any private company, you're dealing with a private company, and there could be, there could be money that's not appropriate, giving notes and no one kind of.
So it's a lot. You know, a good analysis, I mean.
Why we should have a reservation. Right. Been trying, you've been trying.
The, the issue though, with these, from my stance, if we go in, we say twenty thousand dollars for a fee, you know, the problem is, is your cost for. Engineering and legal fees, I mean, we all know, sometimes they can be asked for.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I think that's one of the, would probably have to be looked at. Over the course of a few years, because of those costs per service they increase. If you, if you put twenty thousand dollars for that application fee, and then that's gonna cost the county forty thousand for engineering and. And legal fees, you're losing that.
I don't have to take on those, I'm talking about application fee and that, additional fees that occur and are created by.
In time.
Have both of them.
Yeah. Good, anything else for the commission? That will, lines, everyone has a, a, a. That's really good. Uh, more consideration of the, uh, comprehensive plan. Uh, I should recall that the budget didn't buy it out in this document. And so that got into, I mean, still.
What time?
And I said, I did hear earlier, I remember all this, that I'm rounding outside at five thirty, forty. Before you're even important, okay. Now, so maybe that's, okay. That I. You, you have a seat, you have an entrance, it's kind of a watch, we're already in. Right, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm social media, I don't even go to the. I didn't eat. Carol, if you have a comment?
Is that, uh, revive the comprehensive plan on the internet?
Uh, it, it, it should be all.
I think I.
Uh, next, I have a preliminary resolution establishing an economic re-legalization period, so I assume that's for. And I just.
I mean, it's, there are a lot of different provisions against any company that sold it, certainly we're happy to, if, if you may have preliminary related to the documents, it will be. You know, we recognize fully that Indiana law does not create a moment. Uh, where there can be preliminary dialogue of, of council or. Commissioners to go start the process formally, so this is a great one. For us to maintain, like a most hairy, very exciting. Uh, to be able to invest, you may have, for you to, that's the, it's that, formally, uh, during next month, that will be in your junior. Um, again, to G N X Solar, I know it's been indicated, well, within our company, we do not own and operate. Varied assets that we, that we create. Our role as a company is to put the books together, put the rules together, set. The playbook if you will, about how a project can operate. Within a community, and so we, as, as economic development, as, as can, professional. Uh, we, we work to do that, this is always a method thing, uh, we, what we recognize, we best ones discuss in this group, that the, that the ordinance says what it says. We look at our project, say, it's just a mission, he pointed out, we look at opportunities to find ways to do it better. And find ways to be a good laborer, as, as we see that, as, as the labor agreements are things that are about the function of a project routinely. Uh, and that's something that we look to, uh, these are the goals, we'll do a conversation. Um, so again, we're, we're here to pay questions, I know you're in the seat of the, our economic development proposal. Uh, you do have your baker's theory team and, uh, Rick Hall, the department of labor, that you're, that you're advisor, the books of them to give you. Kind of advise, we're not here to blow high, not to any kind of toxins, um. Certainly, whenever we get over here, we need to, uh, be passive, and so we, and, and find his approach. Uh, yes, you are receiving a letter from G N X Solar, we're operating up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in. In addition to monies, uh, to cover the potential fees that are incurred, so that, uh, for this to work and data spent out of here or a charge here. Yes, those are earned as a company, we, we, we ask whether we'll spend it right here, and we. Will those hundred twenty thousand dollars that, that, whether this, we give us, with your president, as, as hard as. Again, here, uh, answer any questions you may have. We were really announced as well, before we recognized it in a, 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 but as you know, uh, we were seeing these injuries, uh, they, they.
One of these has a, um. Family map that should be adding on itself, uh.
Yes, yeah, the, the E D A law, look in the game, a boundary map, yes. I mean, if you ever got to that, that's what we, we, we do a good part of.
There's no, that, that, that.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Can we get a copy of that?
Caleb, can they have a copy of it?
I think if you can publish it, it's part of that resolution, it's, I think it's a resolution, I think it's. Yeah, whenever it's published, it, that becomes public record.
And Jim, that's in, in favor of Kelly, and you didn't give them. You've given them any information, I've not seen one single thing from them.
Yeah, on February second, that information was provided to the paper, really, and they're all.
That's how they have immunity with any, by the council that I know of, so. Including myself, so I've not heard a single word from them.
And that's certainly, certainly fair, again, we're here to answer questions preliminary, um, you should be receiving communications from your, your paid, uh. Professional staff, I would say, soon, uh, here, to find the.
Have a question today, of course, you can, you know, since we started, I don't know. And, uh, you heard a lot of the. Questions from people, what, what are you doing about setbacks, helping setbacks, are they changed by you, your attorney, your landlord? Why is, we had a good neighbor policy, you know, I, what I remember is, there are setbacks. From the road, the wow, two hundred feet, whatever might be, who, who, that's, who changed?
So we, in our, our petition, our submitted, our permit to deal indicates. The setbacks that, that the project would appear to. So for example, in add, with the final bridge, say five hundred foot setback, when measured from the center line. For what the ordinance, I would say it's a particular dimension. Um, you're a setback from a, a home that's, that's not participating in the center of the zone. Is a, is a certain dimension, we're, we're regating in a, from, from that, how? So we, for our, we would propose in our submitted on our permit, then we pay our rent, when the permit is issued, uh, whether, then what setback will be?
The original setback, you said in order, and they're going on the original setback, Chris.
I, I think this was going with what good answer. That you had a lot of money in your own, in your life, in your building, whatever. But you get on one side, you got all the solar. Reset back, you know, you got, we had the feed or whatever. Still got solar. Solar is, we fancy it, right, and you can grow things around it, they still have solar. And I think that's what his question, that's why I kind of do it together, you still have it there that's environmentally, that's you. And we had people, and the first thing that passed me though, in the resolution, economically, environmentally, this land regards animal behavior. Is all set to be developed. And comes to us. Ready to be selected. Check one, and Gina, if that's what you're saying, and so. I attended one of the meetings back, and I think, uh, you were there, and you had somebody else that did the whole, you know, the whole program. And it was okay, three people were there, was that the four H, three P? Also, another person that was there was a person from, who was even talking about carbon mons. Correct? And I, the, the thing that I heard, that was kind of threw a red flag for me. Is I hope that we're not confusing people, I hope I'm not affecting your program. Or you're affecting mine, how much, how much is solar to be in this carbon fund? How, how is that affecting each other? How is that affecting that one? How is that affecting Attica on that friend and that two mile radius? How is all this? In the fact? The setback, that's on, so that being a good neighbor, you still got a people, you got a person wants to sell the land, and they're making a pretty good dollar for it. And once we sell the land, and it's done and forgot about it, now we sign it off, and we find out that the land. Is now under a twenty-five or thirty-year agreement. You're gonna repair that and rein it back, just like we had it, but you get sometime, somebody sold it off down the line. That, that kind of set a red flag for me because I really wanna know how I'm rejected. And that's what is at.
Well, certainly I can speak to the, the fact that the land that goes into solar generally is purchased by the developer, is leased by the family that owns it. The ground that a substation would go on a very significant infrastructure that has served the utility that would be connected to. The, the, the solar array, that land is generally owned by utility. So most land remains under the control of the family of past police. Uh, of these, we remain to solar, and certainly speaks to your rights and what is to the populace. But the solar array is above rate, our services to defer to the, the movement of the tracking system into the earth. Thirty inches or so every day, I would cross all of our areas. Thirty inches or so every day, I would cross the water here and, um. But yeah, how, if the grants were part of, we're not in the part of this, I can speak, uh, emergency frustration or how that may or may not work. It's not, not our, the other witness, not what we do. Um, but as far as the setbacks go, again, the land is owned by the landowner who controls it. The setbacks themselves, um, could be either farm, then somebody must say, well, God, I brought that cloud on here, three hundred foot wide, you know, strip, okay? Then there are different, different things that happen in that, that, that setback, pollinators, beekeeping, uh, different, you know, grazing. Maybe have sheep grazing, which is not healthy, so it depends on the, the, the project will be enclosed with defenses for your actual order than demand. It's minimum type of that fence to set a fee. And so the fence itself will be an agricultural style, six, seven, six, four, and five wire, much like we did in rural areas thirty, forty, fifty years ago. Much of that side of the fence is good, farming is not, they, they, they have a many number of characteristics that I can speak about the project, setbacks should be realized. Um, but as far as how it integrated, our company doesn't work in that space, so I, I, we can work again, easy mention. But I do want to mention the, the, the meeting that we mentioned that happened, we said in March at the fair, there were, I don't know the intentions. We didn't propose to meet, that thing was run by the Senator, Brandon, you know, the indicator. It was held by, uh, the New York station, so at, at, yeah, or here, so Eric is here, again, that. Um, but yeah, that was not, uh, Gulf and Solar, or G N X, that episode, we helped sponsor that event called the papers for us, papers. But yeah, that, those, hey, speakers, or, like, out of the room, I, I would refer to the Senator, sort of, to handle it.
But you're still competing for land. Carbon, the solar, acres, we're getting paid so much, right, capital, still getting paid. Regardless of solar, there's still a fee paid to the farmer that he uses.
Perfect.
And that's all I had.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Good, thank you.
I got, I got it on you. So again, I don't care for solar, but it isn't that I'm saying that you can't have solar. But you put solar all around this and you could have been stuff, you're still, you're taking away everything. And my concern is too, is, and I'm going to use our area, since I know a little more about it, all built around us, but maybe two. Owned by people that don't even live here. So now you're letting people control around us that don't even live here. That, that isn't fair at all. They don't have to look at it, they want to have it, you come home and put your house in the middle of it, you better put your new cars.
I guess you're in from there, making all the decisions.
It's not even paying for it, yes.
Are they already seeing it?
Sense. What about the elder in the year? Once it's signed in thirty years.
If you live for five years, twenty years, four events, that's what it looks like. It could be, uh, the initial character.
One that my habits are not. And he wants to be, he's not that, he's not, you know.
Well, there are many numbers, obviously, that, like, we did, pricing on nursery, for, 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 that influence how they do, or through the process, but, uh. I think it's been articulated, I think, this, the router, so that permanent, for, for, for here, that, uh, so that permanent is submitted, that's the rules are in play, that the, the, the permit is submitted. That's the rules that are in their life that, now, we also, I think, we're providing, I would say, several moments for a seat. And one move that I didn't mention yet is landscape, each of the private area will include, uh, a double row, singers, never, mostly never, never to shine, no digital screen. That is not something important. Again, the video that's on the project website is a very long digger, it's still, but, yes.
Okay, Corbin, you get the, okay, you're talking about setbacks and fences. Okay, our ordinances, you got, I'm all right, all the Indian got done. Our ordinances are lacking in both of them, is that a first statement? Okay, so you, okay, so, and there he is, you don't own equipment, who owns that equipment? Who has that lease?
So that leases provide Gulf and Solar and then has that, 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 right there, that is the part.
Okay, so then the next, whoever, if they decide to sell that lease, okay, who, okay, now, you're not, you're not required to do that.
But our.
I can't, now, a bit of a forceman, inviting my pitch.
Well, but for our project specifically, I can speak to.
You're, you know that you're not going to hold that for many, many times.
But the permit is on for two.
Who's saying that they're going to end up on a permit? We, we're getting, I mean, what, I, I, what you decided to do with this, if you got something to say, say it, and don't get in your phone. Five to seven is the most difficult on the thing, I think, I forget that. I do not have that so long, we got something to say, say it here where everybody, that is superior, okay? But the, if we're on the B, how do you know that? You, we don't know what we're representing. Well, the contract is what's written in the contract, or the original one following the length. So whoever say it's duty energy, bodies of energy, or A, B, C, that contract and the requirements of that contract, others forbid. And the requirements of the county following that.
The county would have to go after the contract.
We can't get the town, we.
Contact now, I mean, it's, it's a legal matter.
I don't have money for a review.
Well, so.
There's, well, and I don't know.
You know, the option was to move.
No, I'm.
So has Gen X done projects besides you're looking at, and other different ones?
We have multiple projects and we have, you know, operated solar, owned, developed. But I think a seven hundred megawatt project, we have this larger, longer, we have.
So what, the current largest one you got? You know?
Six hundred.
It's tripled. So how long did that take to build?
Well, it'll take two to three years. The initial spade of dirt being burned for the entire project, the, the phases and all that.
The two, three years, because one of the things that matters, you know, is going to bring out these employees and jobs to do, you know, I guess. Deep part question there is, in your other projects, where were those people from? They came in and built, and how many of them, for the six hundred, because that's, I know it's not the seven hundred.
Well, luckily, a lot is changing in marketplaces, comes to those who train solar, by the tech, the, the, the local institutions providing that type of training. So when the project starts construction, in a year and a half, two years, for the twenty twenty six, um, wherever that. Electrical, mechanical, point style contract, choose, sort of, probably, uh, I, I can't say that. But I, I would believe that with additional educational opportunities here, the safety of electricity, there's more than whatever, um, to, 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 but, but.
How many?
So I would say we're probably looking at a labor force of about a thousand to support the overall construction and that material delivery, earth, or seeding, landscaping, and, uh, practical installation. Stolen the power required, um, you know, once it's all said and done, it could be three to six employees that are responsible for maintaining. And so we can run additional data to, to the council here, because of economic impact of what that just led to, as farms come off, and, you know, there's other reasons, like, it's not it.
So who's your general contractor?
There's not one selected.
Yeah, that's all, Dan, you have, you have to hire a general contractor to do this.
Right, we, we're not, we do not, I, I don't think.
Most people understand. And a general contractor, though, in Illinois, are decided by E D A or pollution, so I don't know if that.
Right, and certainly Indiana's law and water conservation standards will slip, will go wrong, what I'm saying is, it's not empowered, your contractors.
But I'd like to know as soon as possible where you're, possibly the same contractor, is it previous, uh, installations?
It, it could be, it could be, it could be a new, a new, I, I just honestly can't see.
Yeah, are you aware of solar in Indiana or all the areas you're selling?
We have projects, uh. Of the down east from Seaboard, we have projects in, not in Ohio, uh, Indiana.
And you, and you tell them, like, you're not going to drive off any people?
Yeah, you can just go to the website, the local agents, yeah. I mean, the closest one, um, Palm School, I said, uh, right across, uh, I'd say right across, it gets a little, a little distant from Randolph County. So it's not in Randolph County, but it's in Ohio, so that's probably the, the project, as opposed to that you could see that being involved with that.
Already done? It's a, it's a case to, for, for, um, there's two data bits, so one side of the cabinet, we didn't, and the other side, we're leaving base already.
Any other council member have any questions for the next?
My, where I would read now a little bit, it's time to depth advise lots of employees in the area, hopefully from here. Um, hoping our economy for two, three years, yet asking for attention or abatement, how does that work?
Well, and I was thinking the investment wasn't necessarily related to the, the short term, uh, employment opportunity that's created. I mean, we're, we're talking about an investment that's nine hundred eighty two billion dollars that's associated with the project, so. The, the question was asked, you know, would this project go forward without, yes, and we'll see if it's funded, it's through the project. Will the project actually get built? Many market forces like we thought earlier, influence market decisions today, tomorrow, and the future. The, the economic development agreement, the economic prioritization area, serve the project for a lot different places. And as this, we do talk about in future meetings, that E D A also serves a community, you know, in a very specific way. Because it allows the tax dollars that are generated from the project to actually be leveraged by your own community. And not by the state bouncing into the tax of this, that, that, you. And the abatement itself only looks at personal profit. The project itself, as the land, dirt, other things, the components of it, that's not part of the abatement, so there's, there's a certain amount of tax dollars, the bottom, sure, that are coming in on tax. With the project, unless it's under construction, and your assessment is rated, but the abatement itself, it would have to be on the, which is probably, so, but that's, there's a lot of different factors to that, so it can't be, it's kind of, it's kind of.
I have one question.
One question, it was.
What's your oldest solar hill that you've developed?
Probably, I'd say eight years, worth of land.
Are all the pollinators still under it or is it white rock?
So that project, I can't speak to it, to have pollinators, which went throughout the, of, of, I mean, plus solar technologies, it never, the other land, just think of the whole dramatic, you know, we put stone under it, no.
I mean, we can put anything under sun. You know, when they put it in there, it still died. But my question is, does it flourish? I mean, does it continue to grow, but it's not, for, in ten years, does it firm up or no longer?
Well, the, the idea is to supply and, and the plantings flourish, because they are a major component of the road protection practices. As, as we think in, you know, raw farm fields that have run off rate in the past, and we're putting in solar panels that reduce the runoff, so basically, that is. If we fail to keep the plantings, then we do not maintain our runoff standards there, for the county, the county surveyor is, the rating board is focused on, not moving directly. So yes, we are highly motivated if these incentives in place to check.
And this area is a lot of, to say, a different sample, people deserve, they're running the department. There's, there are big addicts about the pollinators. Uh, and they now have a dent for the, and, and those that are developers, we kind of think back on that and see how they're going to, and think. That's all the development, and I think that's the drive today, and what we're planning to do is do basically what we're doing. And what they develop on the pollinators and how it, and how the work effective it is in, in, in some graphics.
Yeah, I mean, our project will let us.
As, as somebody that's, is out of, obvious, for plants, I know that there's a very, so balanced between blocking, to, 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 to.
I know a lot of their own, I, I, um, and then they got new percentage, they, they, or, 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 but that, how are you in that, and, and, um. So it's not, oh, we just want to see now, here we go.
Well, and, and before they, they have a lot of purpose privately, and then they're going to take a stage, screen, stand, standing lots of issues at firm, their history is right here. I think it's like the Jasmine. So it's, if we have a look, we, you know, solar folks that are helping us, Indiana, of course, being with our, you know, American Holly, Virginia pine. And Eastern Red Cedar, I mean, there are three plantings that supposedly that neatly are in Indiana, who knows, as it's from the.
Those typically won't be under it, is that?
Those are your screening hours, right, that's, that's, I work actually on shading matters, that's, I've already made one, where a huge, most cities, there's a patient species that's, that's, that we'll cover.
Everybody's drowning, they'll talk about, yeah, and that's, we're looking at a site, and what we do, I'm not saying I'm a detective, but when they go visit, if some of those people, they're. Absolutely clear that Eastern Red Cedar is, they will basically say that they, yeah, you want every friend you grow, every pasture, every horse, horse, and say, again. When you discover Eastern Red Cedar, then I think it's the Red Cedar, but I may flush it over, that Eastern Red Cedar is not.
Okay, we'll go to check, you know, center, like I said, not acceptable, in this part of the world, that's gonna be, I can do it.
Well, how do we know for the next week, will they be the same vendors, because they're in France, or, or, yeah, we don't know, we don't know for you.
So, so protect the standard, that's our, and yet we would definitely encourage that future buyer, whoever's, no, better who does the ground best. We can't abandon it, so keep it around, but, but the standard is still the standard, the road patrol standards are still the road patrol executive requirements, are still the requirements.
You don't have to deal with, this means very pretty fit for a bunch of things, and so far, but once it leaves, and the next person comes. Pollinators following our only, not driving with any kind of vehicles, it doesn't, but no, there's no, nothing in place that encompasses what.
Well.
Have to negotiate the contract.
If, if a project includes a pollinator plan, the polling, this is a polling issue, it's still part of the minimum. Uh, stand back, and we'll, we'll give the contract facility that for us. But yeah, how can we involve the contracts and rules, the pauses, to be moving forward and provide the respect, yes, this. We don't have a state for when the future town is something we'll hold on, I mean, plant saving after the end of perpetuity, something has to be replaced. Example, if you're about, if your folks are obligated to replace it, because.
Wayne, you have anything else?
No, I respect your time, it's not a question, we'll be down, I tell out a lot of the power around us, but, okay, I gotta do a little town. But I just wanna thank you guys. Right here, I'm, I'm just gonna walk, but thank you for coming.
Okay, department head reports, so Adam?
So as you guys, and everyone is aware, this, this last, this recently, actually. We do not have office staff in our office right now, so when that happened, when that change happened, um, last month at the admissions meeting, I actually. Took the time and went back through the job descriptions and kind of reevaluated kind of where we're at, welcome meeting in the office, and I gave you a copy of this new job description. So what I'm proposing today, and I wanted to bring in front of you all, is we're gonna keep one position, we're gonna, that is a full time. And then what I did was, is I took the job descriptions, and I pulled in some of the key components that really, we could. Kind of take from having two positions and really hone it into one, and then the second position, we're still gonna keep, but we're gonna move that back to a part-time. Because really with what we're, we're gonna keep everything in place, but really, we need one full-time year regardless. But really, what I look at and try to look at scheduling wise, there's a lot of times during the year where really one is very, so by having that second position, that second deputy positions. Being part-time, one is gonna save the county, because my recommendation is to take that from a benefit-paying position to a non-benefit. So when we have, just, you know, we'll have the one benefit-paying position and stuff, and one third one. And one thing I am asking is just because there is gonna be a few extra duties added on to that first one, I would like to move just like six hundred and fifty-nine dollars from the deputy two position. Over to that new full-time deputy one, which would make the new salary instead of being thirty-seven, three, four, one, it would just even it up to thirty-eight thousand. So it would not be a even increase, but I didn't, I felt like just since there is gonna be some additional duties asked, a slight pay increase would just be something that would help kind of entice and bring in. You know, some of the positives of that. And then, but like I said, I, the job descriptions, I gave you a clear layout, so that way you'll be able to see exactly what each position, um, that. It's gonna entail, what's gonna be asked of them in each of their jobs, um, like that, I just kind of, we changed the wording. And then the other part two is we changed the title of the positions, um, so basically what they're gonna go is to be a. Basically, they were office managers, it's just gonna be, um, program system, that'll be part-time program system. So we changed the titles and kind of changed the status of the positions, that's where we're at, but I wanted to bring you for you to get. Per form, so that way we can begin working on getting, very, to get the pollinators, and start working on getting this job posted, or both jobs posted, so.
And we've still got one number, is it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, Ashley, the number. Do you have any questions about these changes?
My question's gonna sound like that, like, benefits with the full-time position?
Yes, that'll stay the same, yeah, that'll stay the same play as of right now, and then the second position would just be part-time with the, that benefit portion would be a Monday, so that's gonna stay. So that would be, you're gonna have a scale on that second position.
Is there, do you think with the part-time position, that, you know, anytime during the year, is he might be a deputy full-time for a period of time?
That's why I wanna just, I wanna leave the salary where it's at right now, I'm, I wanna try it out, I feel like the way, if we do this plan, I think we're gonna be good with the one, but having that second is kind of the complement to that first.
Right.
But I wanna have that kind of in there just in case, so that way we can make that change if we would like to.
Do you think that, that part-time position might just have to work a few hours extra during their, their time, or?
Yeah, and that's what I did the numbers on, like, the hours, and even if I kept the hours like around twenty, twenty-five hours, it's kind of, well, even if we did like an increase, like to help us to save their stuff, or their encounter. We'll have plenty within what's left there within that budget, but we will, we will be good for the remainder of the year, so I did play with the numbers to make sure we would be good. And we can kind of, if I had to decrease and cut me off, I, I monitor really close where we would keep within that relative, so.
It's, uh, it's, you know, learning curve rate.
Yeah. And that's what we're hoping is just trying to just change them, make them be a little bit more efficient, and just try to change things up, and that's where, that's what the goal is, is just change the episode.
Can you realize that we will not remember that, say, the county, in the future? Every time you come back, you need to.
Remind us.
Repression, how much?
That'll be the first sentence I say, I don't worry.
We will forget easily.
Some of them are old and can't remember, so.
I eat a lot of those.
So do you wanna adopt this change?
Yeah, and if I, the admissions, you know, this first or not?
They are, they are. I'd say it was remark me.
I do, it's amend our salary, or then convert it, and she, because it's on the front page, she can change it, but with the mention. If that's agreeable, there we go. Okay, okay, for a second.
Aye.
Okay. Yes, Jim. Yeah, we gotta probably make sure he gets his.
Okay, but if you like, it's that, no, I mean, those are used to that, when you had a copy of, you can see what changed, so.
Okay.
We will remember this, we will.
Please, please gently remind us.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Gar? Okay, yeah, well, Jason, first, it's gonna be a long.
I'll try not to be that long, but.
You got five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, I'll work.
Talk fast.
So, um, I sent you guys an email, uh, reference explaining what I talked to you guys in last month's meeting. Reference, uh, some employees from a basic to advanced, did you guys get a chance to read that? Not all of us, I made copies, but there's enough there for everybody. So, kind of explained a little bit better, coming around, uh, the front page basically explains what the hourly rate is for advanced EMT. And broke it out, the, like I said, what the forty hours, you know, what their base rate will be, and then what the project. What I project would be the overtime, uh, which their, your salary would be eighty-six thousand, the basics is broke out the same way. And their annual salary is, my basic is seventy-two, so the difference is, I told you guys last month, about fifteen, twenty, uh, it's actually less, thirteen thousand, two sixty-four, we have. So what this class entails, uh, it does take about five to seven months to do it. Uh, what's included in that is didactic hours, clinical hours, and then they gotta do a, what they call national registry test. There's about a minimum, there's a minimum of a hundred and sixty-two hours of didactic, which is classroom, either online or in class. They have to do a certain amount of like ID sticks, patient contacts, and that, we set the hours minimum, seventy-two hours of ambulance. Which is still internship, as they call it, and thirty-six hours in ER, that is their clinical time, and then once they successfully complete all that. They will move on, and they will have to challenge the, um, practical examination and the national registry test. So, and that's right now, national registry is charging around a hundred and fifty dollars for them to take the test, they will have to go to a Pearson view site, which is typically like. ID tech, and they can take, take that test. So, the back page, what I kind of tried to put together was some positives and some drawbacks to it. Hope you guys understand what, so what we're trying to do, we're trying to create that environment, as we've been talking about for quite a few years, is. Creating that an opportunity for, you know, individuals, um, presently that are with us, and future employees. Uh, a chance to advance if they would see bit two, uh, in their license or certification. Uh, and this would offer that, you know, they kind of, we just typically bring in, you know, an EMT, they put their time in, whatever, if they're interested in moving on. They would have this opportunity to do that, and if they so don't want to, they don't have to, they can stay right where, you know, where they're at in their level. Creates versatility for us, so what that does, when I'm talking there, is, you know, it kind of falls in place with, you know, number four. But it offers that opportunity to, you know, they can work side by side with the medic, if they're partner of the medic, a lot of things, they can help with that paramedic on call. And so it makes it very versatile in, you know, our, our certifications and providing advanced life skills out there. Um, the big thing, number three, takes the burden off of scheduling. Uh, if a paramedic and advanced EMT, for example, are partnered together, uh, and right, and paramedic takes a day off. We don't necessarily have to find, fill that spot with another paramedic, uh, we can fill with an EMC. Uh, right now, what happens is we're typically partner paramedic EMT, and if that paramedic takes a day off, now we're trying to figure out. Who could fill, you know, at least another advanced provider to fill in that spot. And sometimes we're not able to do that, so now we've created a basic truck, and now we're gonna start utilizing outside source, you know, either our sources. Which takes, and then could take the paramedic out, out of service, or we're gonna have to reach out to an outside agency, and now we're still, you know, taxing the system. Four, we would provide the teaching in-house to our employees, uh, in, in the, in that, we've got four of us that are certified as EMS instructors. We can teach at this level, uh, the only charge would come, would they would have to pay for the expense of their books, material. And then in the national registry test, which comes to about five hundred dollars, five to six hundred dollars. If they were to go to an outside institution, you're probably shooting at about fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars for the class, and that counts. Paying instructor fees, the books, the, you know, materials, and the national registry test.
That national registry test, is that a proctor test at ID tech?
It is, it's a computer-based test, but there is a proctor that's there.
That's something, I don't know what they charge at ID tech, but it's something you can check, but the learning center does a lot of ID tech proctor tests.
Well, only thing we'll have to check, and we could, and I'll be able to check, it'd have to be a Pearson view accredited facility. Because, and I can take it, yes, we most certainly can check and see if that does, yeah, yeah. Uh, drawbacks, um, I have five individuals that are interested, so, you know, it's gonna be, and then, keep in mind. This is proposed, I'm proposing this for the twenty twenty-five budget. I would like to start this class here May or June, but I would propose this in my twenty-five budget. But in order to move forward with the class, I would like to have your guys' blessing, we can move forward with that. Kind of wanna get the cart before the horse, get the class started, and then start to go through, but the minimum, it is, yes, we'll increase my budget around sixty-five thousand minimum. Now, the initial cost, that's very significant, down the road, I think it'll help financially, because going back to up here where it talked about. If the paramedic takes a day off, if he's, him or her partner with advanced EMT. We would have, we could find a basic EMT to work with that individual, we pay them right now eighteen dollars an hour, whereas. Right, and our paramedic will pay it twenty-four dollars an hour, so in turn, we're gonna save a little bit of money by doing this. How many hours, forty? Um, hundred and sixty-two didactic. That's the minimum, with bike state law, we have to have, we sometimes will over this a little bit, but not much, and then clinical hours of seventy-two hour on the ambulance. That's a minimum, and then thirty-six hours in the hospital setting, ER setting. But there's certain guidelines they have to get, they have to have so many ID sticks, they have to have so many patient contacts, um, all that, and they have to. They may have to do more hours than that on the, on the clinical side to get those, just depend on.
Real quick answer, so if you have four instructors, does, does it cost the county, is it for money for those instructors to conduct the staff?
No, that's why we're doing it for, we're doing it on our own, because it's our people within our county doing it, now, if we have outside of the individuals that are interested in class, then we'll get charged to them, but if it's in-house. Because we have instructors in house.
First for them, we have a foster.
Yeah, right.
So if you did this class, when they are taking the class, if you, are they on the clock at that one?
Yes.
So does that take them out of the ambulance, whether in class, there are students in the way, and, or.
It can, if not necessarily, because we look at that, part of what we're looking at trying to do is we're trying to create, and we can, for the state. We're trying, trying to create this class of fifty-fifty, fifty percent online, fifty percent in class, so that'll help a lot, so they can do a lot of self-study themselves. Looking at what the material we're covering, um, I don't think that it's necessarily gonna, if they're on duty and are called. They're probably not necessarily gonna miss enough in there, and it's where it's gonna cause, probably what we're gonna have to do backfill. Because of, you know, because a lot of it's gonna be self-study or online.
In advanced EMT, can they, uh, give management?
Yes, not, they can't, there's, there's. They can start IDs, uh, there are certain meds they can, certain meds they cannot. Um, looking at our run number, you know, looking at some of them, uh, there is a fair share of them that would need a paramedic, you know, to take care of the call. Some of them, we don't necessarily have to, and that would be where the advance would help a lot. And it create, it also creates that, like I said, that opportunity advancement, it's a good, when you start looking at. Organizations, what they're doing, first and foremost, the step we made last year with payroll, salary was a big one. Uh, we are starting to see more and more individuals are applying, um, because they're starting to hear that, and this is another one, is the education side, what. What are, what is, what is being offered, because a lot of, a lot of the organizations are offering further education for people who are. Like I said, this is a twenty twenty-five proposal, what we would like to move forward with this class, because if we start in June. Uh, for example, or May or June, they're not probably finished with all this done until first of the year. And so we're looking at, wanting to put, and this was kind of what I brought to you guys last month, and they asked if we could please, I could bring it to the full council. Why, why do you?
Are you having any objection during that?
I don't have any objection, that clinical hour, thirty-six hour, in some hospital, anywhere?
No, what we'll do is, the, the training institution, we're presently under, that we teach under, they're affiliated with IU Arnet. So they will do their clinical time up there at IU Arnet, which is a very busy ER, so they'll should get a lot of good clinical, uh, experience there. Uh, we're looking at, maybe on, maybe a lot of it's gonna be with us, we may look at partnering with Benton County, which is our training institution, but they'll be able to do some of their clinical time there. We've also discussed maybe doing a crop removal fire, um, I have good relations with their, with their EMS chief over there. The run volume is a little higher than us, so it kind of gives them that versatility of seeing different areas, so.
So we have to fill that position during that clinical cloud, you have to find some.
They will, they, their clinical time, they'll have to do that on their off time. Yeah, and that's typical, what most, that's what most, when they, when you do that, most of your students, that's what they do. Is where you run in, possibly, or the classroom side is, if they're on duty, it's there, the class will be held at the station, and they'll, they'll have to travel, it'll be right there.
So, and if you go on a call, like.
Yep, yep.
With that interruption, it's not gonna bother you?
No, because with us, what the instructors deem right there, we can always help them, you know.
Are we gonna have an assignment on trial?
That was a discussion, but I, I, I kind of, I look at, in the past, what we've done. Um, especially when I went through, was the county paid for my tuition, that's on computer contract, in this situation, there's really no tuition that county's paying, because. We're doing the class, we're doing class free, and they're paying the books, so my thought is, is there really should, no. Contract sign, if we were paying for something, then I would absolutely hundred percent say there needs to be a contract sign.
If you have an allocation, you're saying, you'll have an obligation to stay with them, so as soon as they complete it, they can jump to another county, start working. And they got most of their.
Most, they will, but I'm pretty, I, I don't wanna sound cocky here, but I sound confident that the individual they're taking are not gonna, they're not going anywhere else. For the money that we're making, they're making right here, we're the leaders in the area by a long shot, I mean, or that salary to increase. The only, the only, the only entity that's close to us that just got a gigantic raise accredited to us is Warren County. But they're hospital-based, and they're dumping a lot of money into their EMS right now, to keep their people. To keep their people. So I don't think, I'll be truthful, I don't know that we can compete with the hospital. When it comes to a salary. And they just actually got, ever since though they, after we got our raise, they've got another significant raise. I don't know what the dollar amount is, but I heard it was significant amount.
Guard the overtime hours, is that not being consistent?
On this, are you talking on this?
Uh, this, I'm just looking at overtime hours.
On the, on the paper I gave you, right?
Oh, not only that, but it changes what you know. Is that gonna change or is that gonna be pretty much?
That's pretty much the consist consensus, if you look at, as I wrote down before for you. We have twenty-six pays. Seventeen of those pays, again, in that two-week period, there's forty hours overtime. And how that works is. That one week they work three days, the next week they work two. So they'll have thirty, thirty-two hours for their three twenty-four hour shifts, so they'll have thirty-two hours this week, the next week they'll have eight. So that's your forty hours in that pay period. When you break it all the way down out of twenty-six, seventeen pays is the forty hours overtime. Nine pays are at sixteen hours overtime. So when you, when you add that all up, that's where I come up with the eight hundred and twenty-four hours of overtime. And that, that's projected, you know, that's a projection, you know, it's not. It could be less, it could be more. But if it's more, then probably somebody else is taking time off and they picked up that time. So it kind of. Counts itself out a little bit.
So in the schedule, you know, let forty hours natural out. There's definitely overtime because of.
The way the rotation works and the hours they work. There's overtime.
We still have some that. I don't wanna say taking advantage, but I know.
And so, yes, it has in a lot of what happened there, very good question, what happened there was. At the time when this took place, we still had two open paramedic spots. Um, we were having a really hard time getting applicants. Uh, we were utilized from Facebook, our Facebook page, we were getting no hits. Uh, we were told that you can, we would get hits off the state website. We were not getting anything off of that, we, we, I would redo it multiple times. Finally, we took the, uh. We stepped in and we did Indeed, ZipRecruiter, LinkedIn. And we ended up with five applicants out of that. And we were able to hire two individuals out of that. And, and so we filled those spots. We still have two vacant, which are the twelve-hour shift, and we were able to fill two of those, we still have two open. But I do now have an inter, a, a paramedic interested in doing the twelve-hour shift. So we're in the process of interviewing that individual and potentially gonna put them in that spot. So now we'll be down to this one open vacant spot, so. With that filling in. That's gonna cut a lot of that overtime in. They're still gonna get it, but not as much, yeah, yeah, not as much, yes. I had a couple that were, I was going to answer, they were.
I understand the one.
We had some of them were broke to over eight thousand, I remember that, so they're picking up a lot of overtime, yeah. Yes, that, that's what I mean, after we've filled those spots, those, those, the two. Twenty-four hour shift, we fill those, it is. And, and now we're giving, we're giving. EMTs and paramedics that are now coming to us that are interested. That if a man a full-time spot comes, they'll, they're interested in that. Okay, so do you want to? Approve him doing this spooling or do you not find that yet?
I, I, I kind of agree with you, Jim, we're gonna do the, like you said, you know. So they'll be ready to go in twenty-five. And that you need, you need the five extra people if they have us.
That, that, they're gonna be, they're already there, they're basic EMT, we're just now advancing them up to advanced EMT.
We don't have to change. When we do our tower or.
Yes. I'll put that in my budget. That'll come to your budget when you guys, and that'll be what I turn in in June, and then we'll, we'll discuss it at the hearing too. Uh, their emotion, that allowed for them to start with. Uh, still hearing truck's name, we're hearing, uh, on the new new drivers, uh, not hearing anymore, but. That's May, I don't know when in May, I don't know, first of May, end of May, whatever, but that's what we're hearing. And I will, I'm in running to start. Expecting another truck. Find out cost and timeline, and once I find that out, I'll bring it to you guys, and then we can decide what we wanna do from that point. Last time I talked to him in January, this was in January, it was just four months ago. It was still twelve eighteen months out for delivery. And we were probably. Thought we earned about a three. But I don't, they'll thank me for that, I do know the timeline in twelve eighteen months then. So I'll find out more and I'll try to bring it back to you in May and let you kind of. Go from there.
And now we're gonna have two new ones that are gonna age at the same time, and trying to be there within the year, so.
I think we're gonna have to probably leave one every year for at least a while, until you, you know. Oh, I don't know, we'll see how it is, but like I said. I'll have an explanation for you. And the other thing, last thing real quick, uh, Kelly and Tom, uh, was able to attend a meeting on our asset management program. Uh, due to Stryker, this basically is on medical equipment, this accounts are cots. Um, monitors, uh, our Lucas devices, our mechanical CPR device, and a stair chair. Um, I think she's due to elaborate, uh, it's basically a lease program, it's a ten-year lease program, basically what it is. What happens is, is if we were to go in. Into this program, we're locked in on a price for ten years. There's no price increase, um, you know, it's just a flat fee for ten year. At the end of ten years, you can opt out or you can pay out. Um, but looking at the numbers, uh. Right now, as we're seeing in the, on the annual side. The medical field right now is very volatile. The prices are constantly changing, with Stryker. They have for the last three years, um, they're doing two price increases a year, February first on October fifth. They're doing between three to seven percent. So for example, if we were to buy a monitor today, the brand-new monitor is sixty-four thousand dollars. Exact monitor we have on the truck. Twenty or thirty-two thousand. So if you, and what happens is, is if we lock into this, it's a black fee, we do not. Incur any of those fees, any of those.
You're not gonna buy cots and buy monitor for you?
It's actually six monitor, but forgot I have one on, on the, um, on my chase vehicle, but yes.
What's the yearly fee on that?
Somewhere around in there, it's actually gonna change because we, what we.
You can allow us to trade in equipment to get us credit for that. Also, we have the opportunity to do a three-year, four-year, or five-year refresh at the one-retime refresh. If we did a five-year refresh. And then we get to have new equipment at that time, no additional costs, so we're made the same payment. So you have all new equipment again in five years, at the end of that five years, you do your buyout, which would be no more than a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars to buy out all the equipment. And that was carrying you another four years beyond that second five years.
And the reason that this, that is, FDA sets the, uh. Limit on equipment is eight to nine years. So the time, you know, the lifespan on them, I should say, is eight to nine years. So that's where we're coming up with that. Thirteen to fourteen, year thirteen or fourteen. That's what we, we would have to look at if we were opt out at year ten. But what I'm doing is just planting seed, um. I would like to have opportunity to, I think, and Tom and Kelly have said. Uh, Brenda was there, uh, I would like for this individual to come in and do a presentation with you guys, and let you see it. And it, to me, it's probably gonna be. A twenty twenty-five budgetary thing. Unless we. Look at the lit packs, you know, if that's what we look at more, we look at a budget, but I think I'd like for him to come in and do the presentation for all of you. Because me being the middleman, I won't forget something, and I want him to hear it from you directly. You know, from him to you. Do you can see it and you can make a decision how you wanna do it, I just think it's right now where we are with the market. We're hearing. Well, late twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven, before we're gonna see any stability. Some are even far out in twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight, before we're gonna see any stability in the medical side on pricing.
Uh, what gives the advice, how many of those were in one to?
Uh, we got four right now, but with five animals, and they were putting that fifth one in there. And five stair chairs.
And we don't know a amount like cost for those.
No. Which, once he gives me that information, the numbers are gonna change, I think they're, they're gonna probably go up, I don't know what they're gonna go up to. Once he gives me that, I'll pass that on to you guys, look at it.
I asked him to, how long was the load good for? He said until September thirty.
Cause of the price increase and not till the fall. But anyway, I just wanna make you aware, looking at tonight and figure out, cause right now. If we don't go with it, I would come to you guys for twenty twenty-five asking for two monitors and three cots.
And that hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, we've went to a hundred eighty-seven thousand after I left, Kelly. So anyway, that's thirty thousand dollars, you know, but at the beginning, that first year, paying, paying for those.
And, and one thing is, there's a lot of, there's a lot to in a package. So the preventative maintenance is included in that. So you get free batteries, so you get free batteries for the monitors. The Lucas device and the cots, right now, cots, they're, they're, they're very costly, I have to order a two-pack. They're right now fourteen hundred dollars a piece, or fourteen hundred dollars per set. And I just bought some and I'm getting ready, I'll have to buy more. So it's getting, it gets very, very costly, all that's free, and it was, it's not free, but it's included in that package, I should say, let me rephrase that, it's included in that package. Uh, there's a lot, there's a lot of other. Information that's included in that present too. So it's just not just. Equipment, it's other things too.
And how long, what's the warranty on the cots and not the warranty? On the cots and the monitors?
Eight years, four to five years.
There was a cot, we ended up actually, well, a few years ago, we had to change the way that you were operating because now there are power lift. And yeah, I think to do was, they were all up the steps and use it for the.
No, no, they won't go up the steps, uh, it, it, uh. They're not necessarily going up the steps, but the advantage, what we're looking at is the power load side of it, that's actually in the ambulance. That's where, that's the advantage of the power cot, the power load system. Is what you're creating is we're taking away that deadlift. When the individual takes the cot, puts it in the, into the, into the angle, that's considered a deadlift. This is where a lot of injuries are at, with these power load systems, you know. Um, it, it eliminates all that, and that's all included in this packet too, just replacing those carloads. But anyway, I'll have him come in, do you, do you wanna? Any specific time you want him to come back? I don't know, you wanna see him before budget time?
Yes, probably June, June.
All right, I'll try to see if I can get you to understand that, but let, let him present to you guys and. Okay, thank you. Okay, we ready to adjourn?
Um, just, just a little update, I know I talked to a couple of, uh, about. Things going on, we, we were able to, uh, build a scoop spray liner for a tank of truck, and we. Uh, made that decision, and we will be knowing when the company out of Merrillville, Paul Glencoe. For the opening bid, lights, uh, everything. The, the total price of the bill will be two hundred and fifty-four thousand, which we have. Money in the account, getting the budget through that, so. So we put our request in, yeah, we put our request in, uh, before the middle of May, which we've already done. Um, they had an open, an open bid for. Open bill. For the third quarter of this year, so we probably won't see the dump truck until, uh, the beginning of next year, so, hopefully they're all on.
But you got the money budget. They just need to make sure they go before the end of the year.
Oh, they, they will, once, once we put the order in, fix the resource well, if they're. So that was really the only major thing I had.
Hear about me and Debra's.
Tomorrow. I even wanted a couple guys to Oregon Illinois. To Ednire, um, we lost our, our guy that. Ran our oil screener or fixing on the pavement this year. Um, so we have a new, a new, some cordials stepped up and wanted to work out do that. They offer a class at Ednire. So we're, we're sending again, you know. So, um. I guess the big reason, I don't wanna make wireless, I don't wanna pick up all their time, there's been. Every time I find a look over it, hopefully.
Denise and I were taken with that, go ahead Denise.
I brought it, I was obviously in person, but. Truth is, I wish she didn't have anything on it, cause it's never anything personal to me at all, um, I don't even, yeah, I mean, I don't wish it would, but. Um, I appreciate, I think it's, it's pretty reasonable, I appreciate you putting some effort into something crazy. Um, but I know we just approved the major, which was questioned in the last time. You know, people are concerned about that, the state law and everything related to, not to people who step in anyway. Um, my concern with the secretary position, when we look at all the other secretaries and markets. Um, they all pay about thirty-seven, three forty-one, thirty thousand, we jumped in that one, the forty-five compared to those other. Secretaries that have been there. Don't, they're comparable or something. So I don't, you know, I mean, if there's a reason that, that.
I'm just asking, is she not considered part of the courthouse before she inserted?
Always been considered, that position is the way the bench is there, the same as all the deputies in the courthouse. We're always paid that the same.
Maybe that shouldn't be, I don't know, I just, I looked at, in person, that jumps out and. Not being, so, and that's not making it a starter, I mean, I don't, I don't.
And that secretary, moving on all our secretary. And that secretary, moving on all our secretary tables. So I mean, that's.
Um, Jason.
That's right, it does, yeah.
I mean, we're looking at the soil and water board, which is a separate department, you know, she works for people that aren't paid for the county. So she, the secretary paid, you know, for the county level, um, who doesn't know that this is going down the road now. But it really does, it's considered.
You know, the soil and water is.
What does she, what does she do? What does she do? She's your total secretary for everything, everything.
Yeah, I mean, she does her plan, she does payroll, well, she gets everything ready for that. Uh, she helps with, um, community crossings, she does anything with the board, she.
So, okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I was gonna say, I mean, you're putting a nerve of salary higher than our elected county clerk, he's an elected officer.
And I just want, I just.
No, no, I didn't, no, yeah, I understand that, but I mean, what's our person to say, you know? And we can adjust true salary, and no elected official can be adjusted during.
Sure, yeah, like I said, I just did a makeup for the department. Uh, it's, it's according to their founding. For Montgomery founding structure, a little, a little bit, I checked with other counties, um, relative to our size. Maybe not necessarily, um, as many employees, you were taking a few, but as far as road models and things like that. They do have working for you, um, and what we're trying to do as far as the year of service pay, you know, right now, we have. Travis and myself for the long tenure there, twenty-seven years, fourteen years respectively, and. We got somebody coming in, brand new, they're maybe the same amount as, uh, just say like a guy, you know.
And that's the way it is with every department, I've been there thirty-five, working on thirty-five years, I get unusually two thousand dollars for my knowledge.
Yep, and, and I mean, it should be done before we meet.
And, and by the way, it's adjusted the ambulance, you know, we, we adjusted all their salaries, all the EMT stuff. But the secretary did not adjust that one because we left it the same. Court out, we only adjusted, uh.
My, no, they clear mine's not a one.
No, no, I'm, no, no. Yeah, and it's not, it didn't matter, he was in that position, it's, it's. The soil and water, the extension, we've always, all the deputies and all court out ops have all been the same.
I guess my thing is, is before, I, I say, I guess, anything, I need to know where I'm standing out on. Like with the recent payment and, um, the address.
And I kinda thought of others about that, I just quit retirement and later, I believe, because I wasn't sure.
Sure, yeah. We talked about that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I would know, there are very many, cause there, there are hardly any, and whole countywide, they're all from their retirement.
Uh, more now, we just had a big meeting, I had the representative come around, so.
I'm gonna need that, did you, did you sell myself, was it you that sold maybe? Not more than we got. That might have been somebody.
He's got a simple sat now though.
They are. Position and I'm still.
What about paper? Don't you sometimes have some part-time people come in or turn in bill, are you looking at the just the their?
Uh, I, 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 we have, so I usually hire two part-time people, um, actually, we just have one with flat stuff. Uh, I do have a couple of retired guys who'll be here as soon as I'm back, that I don't have to train and go out and run the refrigerator or low. And presumably maybe two or three days a week, you know, I haven't watched their hours.
But were there maybe increased, I think that all.
It was, yeah. It was like sixteen dollars. So I'll. And then there's their, they're all with me.
Yeah, yeah.
So the first time we have seventeen and now, but, you know. Yeah, so it's what our salary, you know, so if you wanted to change that or.
You're talking, very many sort of tired.
I mean, they're not giving benefits or anything, they're.
And single.
They both do have us, yeah, yeah.
It's historically been sixty-five percent employees or less than five years.
No.
We get a big chunk of retirement as a problem.
Oh, I mean, we, we just started hitting younger people, probably the last fourteen years, now. I was known as a personal watcher a couple of years ago. Almost, so.
Old is the one that we talked about the other day.
Zach, he is, he just turned twenty-one. I've got a twenty-two-year-old, I've got people in their mid-thirties.
Well, you know, that's true, that you got young guys, you got, you got these old guys, you gotta be retiring.
Four or five, I'm not saying, but how much is that your retirement pay? That is standard for. Here's a service for rent, yeah, for it.
It's, it, it was set up in a chart, like, one of the five years gets this amount and it's capped out at five. Years after, two thousand after, um, was it twenty-five?
Yes, it happened, then an increase.
No, here's a services, I took their years, provided by just a random number of two thousand and, okay. Just to kinda start carrying these, carrying us away, that's what you're doing, you're here.
So if we went, if they were no longer get that, you're service on top of it for afternoon.
I have a big one, so.
I mean, I don't, I mean, you know, you understand, so we have a lot of them, but.
And that what the sheriff's terminal wanted, and we did approve that. Yeah. Right, we're gonna look at it every year.
Right.
Yes.
We don't want to retire ourselves to get a lot of, I think, and every two year.
Right, yeah, but it's, it's, the order of services is just the one time thing, just starts a guy in there. And then whatever she wants, when it goes over the, she's down the street, makes a change, that's in there, five years.
Well, I get work with my spot the roads, and our roads are awful, so I think, I mean, we have to staff you, we gotta get training people in there. Now, I know material, the next thing, they only come a little bit later, so we just can't.
They're making the same as somebody coming off the street, but that's how we are. I make the same as someone.
It's everything. Pre-tension.
Yes.
That's. I mean, I heard about.
Like, we, I've been here thirteen years, we make the same as somebody coming in off the street. I mean, that's just how it is.
And, Amy's pushing coming in first day, we see Amy sending out money. I asked you why, you said, well, maybe, it may not look fair, but you're trying to build, to get people. They keep them.
And that, that doesn't mean it's someone's not qualified. You know, so maybe the assumption someone's not qualified, say, hey, it's somebody that's already here. Yeah, um, I mean, I always. Thought that that wasn't in good plan, when I, when I was clerk. You know, I brought in two new deputies and they made the same as one deputy in there that's been there fifteen years. And I, I said, at that point, I told the council that was down here, that isn't fair, you should set a, a starting salary. And then when you come in and it opens, and then each person that's been here would make more. Cause they give some reward for the years of service. But then I also got pushback from some of the office holders and said, well, they're doing the same amount, same work. So it didn't fly at that time, but.
Okay, so then I guess you gotta look at, some of these have a top-out number. No matter how many years of service you have, you're not gonna make any more than this, because that's how they control their budget.
Yeah, so.
You know, school, I think school's been there, where my sister worked, she's an RN, is that they have top out, so.
But I didn't wanna get many top out, I shouldn't get many top out.
Agree with Jason that when you bring somebody in, uh, certain pay, that shouldn't be the same as those.
I agree with that.
And, and I know that's gonna take a lot of work to try to come up with a solid plan like that. But I think that's something we need to look at, it's hard to say, uh. We need to love it, not just highway, we need to love system-wide. Uh, but rewarding people for, for staying.
But I think he's, he's in a need to, we need to get on.
Yes, cause he needs, he's got Philly's positions, cause we gotta look, keep her, just like our department, so.
So how's everybody feel about this?
I, I think it's fair, I just, I, I'd be able to say that, I still, I'm just gonna be honest with you, with the secretary.
I, I agree with years of service and our pay per, like, I mean, I think we also need to give a lot of to give you. Their health and position of someone from, someone that's, uh, very similar to that for ten years. They all come in, you know, but that's what living in a big sector.
Yeah.
So that's similar to the sheriff's department and the lateral.
Right.
Free years of service with you, yeah.
They don't even say that they want to help, anything?
No, I just, I mean, Travis and Jason, for years of service, I mean, you have a heavy load because of the. Low amount of tenure that your people have, but you're doing a lot of training with people right now.
Well, and now, being as hard to start something like that, we have to have a lot of people that doesn't have a lot of service. Instead of like somebody on me that's been there even longer, and then that's.
I mean, we have, we have, thankfully, a group, group of guys that are there and now, uh, we definitely should do that. Um, you know, some, some people that did it for a while, don't want to train at all. They're more happy at all for the new people, so.
I think it's great you came in knowing how to draw yourself.
Yeah, yeah, that helps.
And then we all read, uh, some people, they was in a position with the employers, I drive you, and so they was gonna check that, I should have said, he was gonna give the truck right out. So, everybody appreciate.
I make a motion to accept the, the hold off on a secretary pay and also to increase the part-time pay to the twenty dollars.
And you're gonna do the twenty twenty-four wage adjustment and the years of service.
I think those are fair.
Your, the two thousand dollars would be every, every other year cut, is that right?
That's not right, my motion, I'm not okay with guaranteeing two thousand dollars to you, I, it was like the sheriff, I just, I think the justice is a.
I agree with that. So you can go on, years of service, maybe except for the.
This currently, you know, leaving on the secretary, so in that, we look at the whole of the courthouse, we'll be doing it next time. But adding in there at the bottom time.
Is it possible for my office to get a copy of the proposal, cause we have not seen it?
Okay.
I mean, if we're, we gotta change the salary ordinance.
Yeah, I, I.
I mean, uh, we haven't got any camera, neither, neither one has.
I got this, yes, for you.
I got that, I got, I have information.
I, I have the, have it.
We used to have a lot of, and I.
I'll, I'll get it to you. Okay, so we're going with the year of service pay. And then we're gonna adjust, just their year, whatever, possibly, except for the secretary, is that what your motion?
Is that what you're thinking, isn't it?
How's the two thousand, everybody, either use the service pay to everybody, but we need the secretary now for them.
Okay.
And then. Because it needs to be the salary, the part-time pay needs to be the salary.
Well, this is gonna have people.
Yeah, and so I added the part-time.
Okay, so you.
I don't have, because it's not on the.
So we'll need to go on the salary limits.
So the service, years of service is the one time, across the living is twenty-two.
And we're not taking there. We are taking that.
Correct, let's just make it, here's the service is a one-time deal.
Yeah, and they're all just a one-time.
That's what I thought.
So the wage adjustment. And years of service in a one-time deal.
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be enough for a pause without them, it's just like, yeah.
Um, I should have a judge, yeah, it's like. Okay, so Denise.
Go ahead, I'll, yeah.
I'll, I'll get it to you.
Well, yeah, I even, uh. For additional, I'm gonna have that in additional. Is one of us coming out of different funds, like Cambridge, MBA restricted.
What power will we have set up now? And then the rest.
Okay. Okay.
And we won't have to additional for later on.
Right, but I don't have one idea, I think that would be.
So when are we going to make those, if I, um?
Actually, that, that, that does hurt Denise's motion, so next pay or?
We're not, we're afraid for it to be approved in the sound ordinance and, um, and I'm not going.
Oh, they're just getting ready to turn it in, so, so the nineteenth. The nineteenth, that she'll have to redo all the pairings, just getting ready to turn in.
The third of. So your motion is located via the side of management. Okay, so it's sort of.
Well, but, back to the secretary, how will, how will work that?
Because I, yeah, I think they'll take the time to look at all of the secretaries, but it's not, they're the one that they offer.
I think we need to pump them up at the same time when we go in, I mean. I, which I do. I don't know, I don't wish to.
Do it in budget, so we have.
Sit down and watch it, okay, you've got a lot of money, so it's your big.
Right, right.
Okay, so is there a second to Denise's motion? Okay, they all signed.
Thank you.
I do have one question I like to ask, I said on a baseball pitch. Whenever we get on and build and set up like acting, calling the company fountain, I wait employee. And she. She's, she's always considered old secretary, her managers always been classified as a courthouse employee.
Oh, you wanna make it official highway employee, highway employee.
Cuz she's on on the salary ordinance under the highway department. So you need to, when you do your budget is budget like overtime, just like you do your employees. Or snow removal, so that you bring her in, she can pay it overtime.
Is what you're gonna turn if it's comp time or overtime if she works. When they, when they go, I mean, when they.
Yes, is the reason why we cannot make her the highway department secretary, enlist her under the highway department? But what what I'm understanding is. She's considered. A courthouse employee, cuz you lose her when the courthouse is closed.
She works different hours.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, that's.
That's what I really say. Yes, you make your a permanent employee of the highway department, not a secretary. Occupational, now you got when she going to do.
I have an input and I, this is not. Directed at the person, I know I'll probably go back that way, but it's not directed at the person is. Tell me why. We have so much cheating. For the comp time, if we go comp time, overtime. Documentation, some have been very helpful giving documentation when they work over or what have you. Others have flooded the system. You know, we have to get payroll turned in on time. And it being correct. And we have to send it back and it, it's a constant problem every two weeks. Part of it is, part of it is our department, her payroll is not correct. We have offices here that have two, three employees, can't get it right, I mean. In the courthouse, it's the same amount every. Time, it was a problem, I don't see it, I, I, I'm, I know, I'm getting old, but anyhow.
Well, I thought we, we. Said we would not compensate for comp time anymore unless documentation was turned into you. From all departments on their comp. And it's not to be considered. I mean, and that was the motion that was passed.
And. Okay, they may. Uh, we're finding out that the payroll voucher says one thing, their time parts. Says another thing, but when they take it off of the. I don't wanna say. The rolling like, okay, we have ten vacation days, I took one, it's not coming off of there.
Well, I think.
We're finding a lot of cheating.
Records, it'd be the official records, so.
That needs to be. Passed on to department heads. And.
But that's, that's company commissioners, really why.
Actually, all payroll is under the council. And we're we're even supposed to set the mileage. Reimbursement for their travel and I don't think that's ever been done since I mentioned the council.
Back then. It's set with the state, whatever the state gives, it's set, you know, with the price of gas.
But we're really.
But yeah, yeah, it's a council.
I just know that. I'm not again. I had. I've been a vision to the unfortunate. And talking to the employers. Not so much with the money, but with various situations that went on, so. One person told me, it is your responsibility to take. As a county member. And I did, I worked through the council, we got solid, I'm not gonna go into that kind of stuff. But it it happened, you wanna me, little issue that you don't talk about. And what Colin was talking about is correct, twenty years ago. I attended a meeting on comp time. People abuse it and sometimes it is completely his point where when they get ready to retire, they use that comp time for money illegally. And so that's the reason why she's concerned, but she's got to sign off on it, somebody's, somebody's abusing comp time. And how, who is to say, back that up? Who in here can we look to say, that's right, or that's wrong? And so it comes to you, signed off.
And during an audit, it falls on mine.
That's why your records should be the official record, how much vacation cost them. Time when they turn it into you.
But if, if the employee puts this amount, the department head signs off of it, whether they check it or not. Comes to me, I'm not in that department. Or the department's offside, I don't know, I mean.
So you've identified the problem, what your solution? What's that?
I haven't identified where the problems are.
No, it's a solution.
Solution, I don't have.
We need to draw some kind of. Letter or, you know, from the council. Offices, cuz they don't all have empty, they're busy. But we would send a notice to all the offices. Is it a jar or, you know, I don't know, I don't wanna rule this stuff on those there, we have. And does that, her employees don't have to buy. One time where the state employees, one time where county employees, that needs to be.
Um, so.
So.
Need to have a letter.
Yeah, so we need Taylor to. Line up a letter that says that the council said we will not. Uh, reimburse on comp time unless they.
I think it needs to specify with those, it's one song that. Not all offices are handling it.
You start at a certain time and you end at a certain time, you don't leave it as.
Yeah.
If you leave early, it needs to be put on there.
And one, and one, yes.
And as the auditors. Records are the official time records. Of the employees.
Do you have that words?
Well, we, well, we do already. By ways, we have. One will be made up. That having a vacation comp time with, uh, six time one. And they, they fill out and it has to be signed by Travis for himself. And we okayed and then that's what, that's what we do, then I have a date with Henry, I write down. Who's all, and we. What's all, when the vacation works, it's just like the track, track. That's, that's what we do already.
And then you gotta pay off, whatever, somebody, somebody gotta take care of that job that day.
I guess there's different departments, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, wrap my mind around it, I know there's different departments in this, but who is the main office? Is Colleen's office the main office of all the departments in the courthouse?
Who, what do you say?
They do payroll, payroll, which is kind of.
Okay, so once you get what I'm getting at is, if somebody's gonna be off on comp time. Maybe there needs to be something where they write it on a calendar, you know, Denise is off. X Y Z day, and she marks that day, and she marks three hours, and she marks Y. Still has to turn it into the department head, it still comes through. But there's like a, a, a kind of a checks and balances on that. I don't know, I don't know, I'm just trying to think of something that.
Can we get a, every month, get a list of everyone's comp time?
Yeah. Yeah, I can print it off. I can make a spreadsheet and send it to you guys every month or whatever.
Do you have things?
I think so, and all, all with them.
Taylor will send us out.
This, this, this is sort of important because I, I and Kelly kind of interested in my, uh, projects with. And they, they had a. They called it a little. Uh, Fountain County. Uh, annex courthouse, uh, opening. Kickoff meeting, okay, so Kelly couldn't go, I did. And, um, they are in the midst of planning. Uh, work done on the. Uh, they had people there which talked about project teams, engineering. Um, they had, uh, Mike Conley from Amaresto. Uh, they had heated and air people from, uh. Arcatura or the Viper. Um, they had people from, uh.
Is it onboard?
Yeah, onboard. Uh, they're going to, uh, have a schematic design before. They're gonna have, uh, document designs in four to six weeks. And, and, uh. Somebody's going to be doing. The commissioners at Barret. So I, I. I asked, uh, Michael, when he come today thirteen. To just say what he's, what he says he has seen in the. My, my, but my, my reason bringing J R Kelly, the reason bringing this up is. Their comfortable to him.
I know, and I thought we were all in agreement that the county highway garage, that's gotta be our high, and it was even broader.
I didn't even touch it, I just listened and.
And I think we, that there's gonna be a way around that we can get this county highway garage filled. Without having to raise taxes. And so we're gonna need some time and maybe we might, I think that needs to be started. That process and maybe use some of our county general money. To get it off the ground and we can pay it back with this special lift money. Once we get the legislature. In Jan, cuz they won't be again till January, but, uh, Sharon's hoping she's all that, sort of, she thinks. She's talked to Jason similar, she knows all the situation about the bombs. She said there isn't any reason why they can't get legislation there, so we can use some of that money. And we're setting on five million dollars and I don't know what the county highway.
Seven point four million.
Okay, and.
And that's all buildings, that's all buildings.
Okay.
That's everything.
So and Rodney would do that a lot cheaper than you.
That's exactly right, and so we can use. That special lift money and some of our county generals get it started, we wouldn't have to raise taxes. I'm totally against raising the taxes right now with, with what people have been saying about the property taxes. Fountain County's gone up, Attica's gonna go up next year and. We're getting blamed for it even though the county breaks, county break has gone. We, we are the board that sets all free to where they, they talk, but.
Cuz they're needing, they're needing weekly.
How are we gonna stop spending money?
See, that'll be gone, I know, and that's not supposed to be spent. Both of us have to prove that, I, I didn't ask what I was gonna ask, I mean, how, how they.
But I, I've seen the, the council back and gave, gave them that one million three for. For the end.
Yeah, I thought you were holding that money.
Well, we're holding it back, but it's gotta be approved by both the council and commissioners to spend that.
Okay, so I think we need to have a joint meeting, cuz this is all over.
When they're only inviting certain people to certain things. Now we all can't always go.
On, on onboard, I haven't, I don't think I've got. Archero. We, we've had some and you guys approved those. But I haven't gotten any recently, but if they're looking, I'm gonna be getting the bills.
Why do we have, can we say no? And it's time for us to say no, we're not included in this planning work whatsoever. You ever see a council included? No. It's the commissioners, every person in this courthouse is included in this planning, I'm even going, I don't. But my point of it is, I think there's priorities. I want to tell the people I talked to in the county. Doing the highway garage and doing the annex and doing this board out, I have, I've been talking to people. Maybe we're going in the wrong direction here, maybe there's other things that need to be considered other than just these items. The courthouse is not going to fall down, no. It is not going to fall down. And, and we, the floors are not gonna decay. But if we're gonna fix sweeping, then so don't fix that real yet, because that'll be unfortunate to do that. You know, and here is the final dog, the whole person, the side of holder is us. Well, I don't get it.
They, they, uh, I think someone should be, or if not all of us should be included, no doubt about it. But I'm not gonna sit there and not go and listen to what they say and then tell them. Why, you, you guys are, there's not. They don't care, it's the same way with the, the comprehensive plan, on one occasion, I come with all, most of the comprehensive plan and then just. Just ignore the wall. This is what they're working on, just what you guys. And then. But getting everybody together.
I know, you know, I love pretty people, you know, we got nine one one over here, which spent many dollars in the last three or four years. I'm even heard, and I think it's a great suggestion, why is it? Why do we wanna run it in? Why should it be over there with their best of them? I haven't heard that, I think you're very good comment. You know, how much would it cost us in that, in that wash bay? When the area was supposed to be for the nine one one, you know, can we go over there and, and do something there and connect them? Well, that's not even in the.
I found that if. Did you have run to the jail for the nine one one, who is in a very bad situation here? And then you know that with tax because it's added on to the jail, I, I don't know that.
You know, that was part of the discussion when we were built in the jail and Terry did not want nine one one at the jail.
It could even be a separate entry. But could it be added on here, we could use that.
Part of the. From Terry's response, and I don't mean to speak for him, but I, by being auditor before, when they first proposed billing. On that pod system, they were wanting to use the nine one. Operators to kind of oversee the prisoners. And I think that may be where he was. And I think that may be where he was coming from.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to Perry and see.
If, I mean, if there was, if it was adequate space that you can use on the other side of the wash bay.
Yeah.
So they're still out there.
Yeah.
But they're just separate, like it's still attached, but it's just separate.
So the towel, then the towel is out there, it'd be huge, but now then. Oh, I, yeah. That's just, but it's why I have that, that. Better, that, uh, you know, then we're back to Maple Corner, what we're gonna do to Maple Corner.
Yeah, that's true. Mid fire, or system tower, here, I'll even do that. But we need a may, but.
Do you know how?
She was mentioned, probably have to be.
Yes.
Two years, keep that in mind.
Um, well, I'm thinking of it too, I got a text from Andrew Crowe, this one that didn't know, seventy one total inmates, sixty one males, ten females. Fourteen from Solomon County, eleven from VOC, and two, uh, on the roll, so.
No.
Okay.
That's really fast.
Seventy one total inmates.
Uh huh.
Sixty one males. Ten females, fourteen from Solomon County. Eleven from VOC, and.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I, I got this coming after us, and it said, we're gonna do, you find a way to pay for it, well, you know why? That ending started, we bought that index, there's about a year, and everybody come again, we had consultant, feeling to someone, nothing happened. Everybody kept asking, what they want? Now, in a situation where we had to raise employees out. I'm looking down, two, three years now, where we gonna be? That's where I'm concerned, because. We're taking on, if we take on this kind of, of thought, of three things going on in the building. And raising lit tax, and bonds, and so on and so forth, I think we're just about to blow in the wind. Let's get one thing done. That's where I am, I want to see if we're gonna be able to butt and fund these employees, sure the need for it. But we can't grab money out of the air.
Now, and we got, what, fifty, almost fifty percent of the household, it's not essential, or poverty level, fifty.
Fifty six.
Fifty, fifty five in Attica, and what's Quaker? You know, I don't know how many people. Have in this county that work at Quaker, what's that gonna affect our tax base and?
They are, they are hoping for the sort of, to come in and pay us, and so we can have a lot of money, so.
And so, from what I'm hearing, the public, they do not want that, that's how they're, they.
And, and I don't care if I'm on tape, or if they're, or revitalization area in the map, that's just, no wow, that's just.
And, I mean, they, they wanna do that, so we don't have to come back again, they just wanted to. That entire mortgage area, so.
So will that be at the meeting, ABC meeting?
Now, we vote on that.
No, 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 I mean the map.
Maps attached, but, but in all of, Redland, and Shawnee, uh, Logan, and Davis, right? Majority people.
Done, we weren't, I like Tommy, I mean, of course. Just so we know, no, no, taps and picks, don't have some.
He, he probably should, so that the council members can tell them, we don't have, I mean, we don't want to raise the taxes, and. And we haven't been consulted on.
So you're gonna do all that?
I'm already, that right off, okay, well.
Would be that.
All right, well, the guy from Onvoy, they're sending us, I'm on, the more, the more.
Okay, so I might bring up relatively. The commissioners would like to hire, I'm using this term now, that Miss Burko. Correctly, the, a spokesperson, about that, spokesperson for the county. We, the, who do you get in the newspaper to do things, or reporters? Is there anybody here willing to have a courthouse to submit? An article, they're just doing their own stuff, they don't have time for that. What do we do?
But, so you get my minutes, but. When I was already four, they used to ask for the minutes, and they put them on the paper, they don't even ask for that.
Ask for that.
They don't even care.
Proposals on the night, and on healing nights. At some point, we were all, I didn't, boy.
Yes.
To do it, and secretary of state thirty seven, something, plus benefits, I mean, things. Looking at forty five, fifty thousand dollars in booty.
Right, so, and Brenda asked me what the council would think, and I said, well, I don't think they're opposed to the idea, but if I, it's a, it's a money situation.
That was, she said.
Yes, it's outrageous, she said, so could they, could we have a spokesperson? Then Amber that just resigned, to do that, and maybe a few other things here, I don't know.
Yeah, I. But what that lady said is exactly what we're seeing on social media, that the commissioners want us to hire this person to be able. To build that up, and.
Right.
I, I, you can't go, but, but, but all over the.
And see my.
Citizens think that.
Right, and, and my, I did, he heard what I said, that was not what I was thinking, I was thinking more of getting the information out from the courthouse. Meetings, uh, if the highway departments have a situation where a road is closed, or, you know, uh, things like that.
But why can't we, I mean, I know schools have a system, you can send in your. And get back messages for.
The thing about it, I thought you had.
I think, I, I wish Tina had done here, because I think Tina had something, I don't know if we have it, or she was looking at something, where we get out massed.
Well, we get it for.
Oh, yeah. All right, and I think that's a part of it.
That's what you can do to let people know about.
Larry Bill said they spent about, I think he said five thousand dollars to have this done. And it's, it's great, so they can go and, we can pay their utility bills, well, we can make it so you can pay. Your permit fees, or whatever, you, you get the news, the report, anything that's going on from the police department, or the fire department. You know, any of the meetings for parks and wrecks, or the city, any calendar events, anything, your alert sign up. Um, and I asked Larry, I said, well, you know, what, what does something like that cost, what did you guys spend it, because I think you spent somewhere around five or eight thousand dollars to have that done. And he said, we can add to it, we can take away, you know.
I'll stay the phone number off, they can't.
Right.
Also, that guy has all that stuff on it, everything. I mean, so. Is responsible for their own, like the highway is responsible for putting on wires.
The problem is people don't follow what's.
They answer that.
Right, I agree, the phone one, you want it right there.
Right.
They get a little.
I don't mind going searching for questions, people don't do that.
So, you have another, the planning commission.
And some of.
Clocks, and county council meets. Tomorrow.
That's a hundred percent true.
I think that's something we, we need to look at more than. Uh, we got, like I said, the public is going to name. Forty nine and a quarter, and those were sort of the county website, I, I go on the planning commission websites, there's one. There's one that's accurate, there's one that's inaccurate, so I don't know how.
And that is, and that is exactly what Patty said, in the perks office, she said. That I, it is really hard to navigate, to add things to it for her. And she said, as somebody on there looking at it, it's hard to navigate. So I, and I don't know, I'm not on the website much, because all I'm doing is paying my property tax, most of the time, and so I just go straight to the.
Can you get more information then?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll.
The, and, and we did. Announce that, well, if no people want to.
That does, that, I think that would be a great, so, we got a lot of young people. That want the information, so. Okay.
Give Mayor Kern.
Yeah.
To build a brand new radio station.
Okay.
Build it with DJs and news.
Yes.
Just like the big cities, and have that, that, that would be there.
There you go, you're on to be one of the DJs.
And for. How about that?
Yeah.
A lot of the.
Four and down.
All they need would, was, in my home center, but there's, there's can, everything else. And you want one.
Yeah.
I know, we can build three buildings along there for, for the six million that.
When those figures first came in, I thought it had grown up, and they were just, it was like mind blowing, the amount. And I realized the cost of things have increased, but fully, so.
And, like I said, Brad said he could build it, like, the city building in less than two million dollars, and, but a house, all three of those. And, uh, you know, requirements and everything.
Oh my, lots to think about, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I will get more information on that, anytime I'm gonna get more, you know, you can talk to them about how they capture renewable energy, um, deal over there. Cause I know Rick Paul sat right there and told me that he had never heard of it, but that's been a while, so.
But then, yeah. We don't do tax payments, they still come in, I mean, the, the dollar handles, and you guys lose the way the ordinance is.
Which I don't.
We wouldn't get any. No, we wouldn't get any, but we did tax money, but, but also the school coming to them, and, you know, library and everything else, coming to the, the tax.
How many of you want to be exact, or, or when you go, we use on personal property tax? For, maybe these partners that have signed up, or because their folks were tired and that, you know. So we got, going to, well, six hundred, or thousands acres, so they may still farm, and it's certainly, they may start off online, knowing the work that must be done. Um, just have those ones that are, it's the February, so they don't, they sign it up, and they don't really care, that, you know, whether if I was trying to take it over, they're not gonna help. Well, and, and, or, see, chemicals buy, you know. That's the trickle down effect, but I know Jim has talked about some, like, how, you know, we're in an economic development channel, we're gonna be further ahead. So where are we gonna live to the first, that matters.
And.
You know, the economic development channel is just taking care of the invading part. If we lose personal, personal property taxes, I don't know that answer, I just, I, we're digging ourselves a hole, I'm wondering the whole process.
I wonder if the people that don't live here in this state. Obviously, if they get cash rent, they're paying for income taxes in the state of Indiana. So I would think it'd be that, how do we get, they're solar money? That they would have to be in the back end of the state of Indiana, solar money.
Which is kind of worrying.
Because of the land, and, yeah, I see how really, it was generally.
Which would be. Increased to our clip, money, so.
So, yeah.
Is it a double or something?
Yeah, I know, that's, I, you know, this is just my own opinion, but I'm not for paying off those bonds early, I mean, I think.
The only other thing on early is so we can, you know, from under, you know, lose that, or something else.
Right.
Bonds are paid off, then we can use that one for other things.
Right.
But, right, right, exactly.
Right, once the bonds are paid off, that money, any excess money goes into rainy day money.
Right, yeah.
Which we can spend, but if we can get legislation next year to spend that.
That's all right.
Then I'd say, we keep that, let it roll for the full twenty years, fuck that money.
I got a question, once that bond, and before, you know, we renew that bond for something else.
Right.
You can get a new one to just kind of take the place where it doesn't, sometimes, I'm like.
But it's at, but it's at a rate.
Well, yeah, yeah, you can get new ones, right, now, you know, we, we, when the rates are, that's all I have, that's not, like. How some of those, it's like, man, when I was in school, you know, their bonds were being paid off for the authority that we, they did twenty or three years ago. So some of their, the tuition was new bonds, but the payment just kind of went somewhere else, so.
But they, they have also, some schools have a special.
It's a little bit.
They have a special tax that pay off, and things like that.
Yeah, we just, yeah, we did, we were, yeah, and, and it's, schools are a little, yeah.
And I heard with Attica, they wanted eighty to ninety dollars, but they only, very per person, and.
Part of that was because raised, like, not as.
Certainly.
They were, you know, in that year is when raised, which.
Yeah, we did all, we did a bond, uh. In the, I managed to where the commissioner wanted, we would have. And, and we would have, so. We, we, if we voted a bond, or do the annex, maybe actually even missed, we'd have a, no doubt of that.
Yeah.
No doubt.
Especially now, with.
Oh, yes.
The people are.
Yes.
Okay, well, sorry, we had a long, okay, got a motion to overturn, you got. These two, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
We made the motion.
For these.